All right, we're ready to get started. Today is November 12th, 2024. This is the city council's work session agenda. I'm calling it to order and giving notice to members of the city council and the general public that the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
All right, Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Would be my honor. Please stand if you're able.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember Harris?
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up, we have open call to the public, and this is where the public can address the council about any item that is not on the prepared agenda. It appears twice, once at the beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting, and because any items talked about during open call to the public are not on the agenda, city council cannot respond. So we have Craig Bouchard.
Okay. Hello, all. I hope everybody's having a great day. First first, wanted to acknowledge the article in newspaper this morning, and Ms. Matthews, great input. Fantastic for someone who's on the front line every single day over the things you talked about. You're kind of spot on. The Chamber of Commerce, I think, is somewhat there as well. Who knows? We'll see. But I really appreciated your input to that article. And then I'm to hear that there's some consternation with a dumpster behind property I own down on South San Francisco that's going to make it to a future agenda item. I just, again, want to point out that dumpster's been there before the resident that moved there, and is now unhappy about it. I understand the mural was placed there through GoFundMe and some matching funds from the city through BBB tax. Fair enough. But that dumpster's been there. Moving that dumpster to where? I'm not quite sure what the intention would be and the implications to my tenant or any of the folks that use that dumpster. That dumpster's shared by several businesses, not just my tenant. There's several. I don't have a list. I'm sure we won't could be provided, but moving it to a parking spot or something else like that seems, I don't know, a little ridiculous, to tell you the truth. But nonetheless, I'll talk to you guys in a little bit when we get to an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Review of draft agenda for the November 19th, 2024 city council meeting. Council, any concerns, questions? All right. Then we will move along to item number six, which is a proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness Month. If the council could join me down at the edge of the dais? And Sean, there's no one online or in person? Okay. Lung cancer is the... Lung cancer is the third most common cancer in the United States, and it remains the leading cause of cancer death in both men and women in the United States. Cigarette smoking causes 80% to 90% of lung cancer deaths, and radon gas is the second leading cause of lung cancer after smoking. Lung cancer screening is recommended annually for individuals aged 50 to 80 that currently smoke or have quit smoking within the last 15 years and with a 20-year history of smoking one pack a day for 20 years. In the United States, the overall cancer death rate has been steadily declining since the 1990s, translating into more than 4.1 million cancer deaths avoided. However, progress has not been even against all cancer types or stages, and there are inequities in the cancer burden. The City of Flagstaff encourages people to become informed about cancer detection and to raise awareness, promotion, promote resources, and advocate support for individuals and their families affected by this disease in our communities. Now, therefore, I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And we do not have the requestor in the audience today, so I just wanted you down here with me. We won't be taking a photo. Okay, next up, we have the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This report, like previous ones, touches on some behind-the-scenes happenings. You'll see updates or just information to be shared from Community Development Division, Water Services, Fire Department, Police, and Public Works, and then a few other tidbits there for you. And also appended to this report are the updates from Prose and Human Resources. I'm not going to spend time with any particular thing or component of this report, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have or if you would like any elaboration.
Council, do you have any questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, post wildfire flooding update.
Somebody will let her know. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Scott Overton, Public Works Director. And we have not been in front of you for quite some time. In fact, it's been since May to discuss our post wildfire flooding update. On the good side, we did not see significant flood events over the summer season, which is always good on our construction front. But tonight, we'll have a series of presentations from different perspectives, and a lot of it is based in pictures, so it will go fairly quickly. But I did want to take an opportunity to reflect for a minute. It was two years ago this week in which we received bond authority from the voters to improve our spruce wash. And shortly after that, within days actually after the passage of that bond, we began the work to deliver what's now become a $40 million public infrastructure project through the Sunny Side and Grandview neighborhoods. And I want to underscore, I think, the significance of being able to move a project of this size through an urban environment in about 24 months. We are not completed, but we are on track to be on schedule and crossing our fingers within our budget. We have certainly stretched that as far as possible. We've leveraged a lot of things you'll hear about tonight, but it's good news, and it's a positive affirmation of not only your commitment to the community, but the community's commitment to addressing a post wildfire situation and a bad flooding situation with urban infrastructure. So we're excited tonight to present to you kind of our status on where we're at. I'll go through a series of objectives, but just to underscore the importance of that delivery, it was gathering J.E. Fuller, one of our engineering firms, Woodson Ardua, SWI Ardua, Peak Engineering, and then going through our process and selecting our primary general contractor, Eagle Mountain Construction, to deliver. We also have been utilizing beta PR for strong communication and across the city, division-wide cooperation. And I think as you think about these projects and all the different folks they impact and they start to influence, you'll see a really good reflection of solid relationships and building. We still meet every Monday, and it's been a great experience with 40 community professionals, but a true testament to community and government working together to deliver a really, really good project. So I know I probably went on about a minute longer than I needed to there, but I will assure you that this good work does not go unnoticed, and I'm very, very proud of this group and the progress we've made. We're two years in, and we've got another year left, but your credit is deserved, that you've seen us through this and you've let us do our work. Hasn't always been easy, but we're in a really good spot. Tonight, we want you to have all the talking points. We want to have you, all that information in your head, so as you talk with constituents, you know what is the latest. You have all of the experts here tonight. Make sure you ask us any questions if you have those. We're going to give you an overview of the spruce wash projects and the suite of projects. Julie will do a nice job walking you through the progress. Some have been completed. Some of them are in progress, and some are coming up this next fall-spring timeframe into '26. We are going to celebrate the success and the completion of the Schultz Creek Crossing project. Ed will discuss that with you. Obviously, a burn scar a little bit dated sooner in timeline compared to Schultz and the museum fire, but what a great testament to just sheer commitment to trying to get that one out of the woods, and we are in a really good spot there. And then we want Joe Leverage to spend some time with you talking about why these burn scars did not flood this last season. We had rain, and it's still a risk, but we will understand a little bit better on why we did not flood this last year, which was great news on the construction front. And then we've got a lot of community resources, good communication tools. We'll speak to some of those. These are the highlights, and if you have specific questions even beyond this meeting, please reach out to us. This group is really dedicated, and they're all on the same page, so it's really good when you see responses from multiple viewpoints, and they are all the same. Tonight, it is going to start with Mr. Leverage, who will speak to our conditions and some of the burn scar data from the season.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity today to talk through this. I'm going to run through a couple of things for you. As we go through every monsoon season and even going, leading into every monsoon season, we're wondering, there's a lot of things to consider with what the watershed is looking like, how it's going to respond, then taking data away from the backend of it to really get an idea of why it's doing what it's doing, because that has direct implications downstream on our improvements and things like that. So I'm going to take you through a couple, couple points first. So since the fire, and specifically over the last three years, we have taken observations in the watershed at certain points, about 30, 35 points throughout the watershed, to track vegetation growth, litter on the ground, how much blowdown is happening, what's happening to the soil, to just track these conditions as we go through. And so I'm going to take you through a couple of different points and show you what we're seeing. So these three pictures are from November of '22. Granted, different time of year, which influences vegetation, but May '23, and then just this year in June '24, early June '24. This is in a low burn severity area, so you can see the same, these arrows are pointing to the same trees and the same landmarks. So you can see, see the changes in the grass growth, which is not very, spatially, it's not, not very different over the last couple of years. What we're seeing, like on a low severity point like this, are some of the shrubs that are growing more, some of the blowdown from the, especially two winters ago. The blowdown that happened with the dead trees up there on the fire is, is a lot more. And so the low severity area, it seems like there, it's recovering. Visually, it doesn't look a lot different than it did. It doesn't, not back to pre-fire conditions yet, but it's trending that direction. Moderate burn severity, this is, this is more up. As you're getting closer to the top of Mount Eldon, you can see, again, the November '22 is hard to pick out, but the aspen growth and oak growth spatially is about the same. The height is increasing. The grass on the ground and the coverage and the ground cover on the ground is improving a little bit, but not a lot. So you're getting more dense aspens, but variable, but the spatial is, is not changing very much. This is another picture looking from Mount Eldon Road over towards the Dry Lake Hills. Again, you see this, this same log that I'm pointing to in the picture, and the same, same kind of trend, even between July '23 and June '24, it almost felt like there was, there was a little bit less grass, grass growth on this, on this one slope. And that, a lot of that has to do with winter and how the spring worked out, but not a lot of change over the last three years. This is where you start to see a lot of that blowdown, and this is over near the origin of the fire on the Dry Lake Hills where there's a lot of blowdown. A lot of those trees came down in some of those windstorms two winters ago, and that helps provide some soil stability, that's to the, to the hill slopes, and that then inherently affects what's happening downstream. So some takeaways, like the oak and the aspen is growing. Spatially, it's not changing very much. The early successional forbs and grasses, they are, they are predominant. There's some mid-successual grasses coming in, and, and as the, the litter cover is changing as trees come down in the watershed, as they fall down. So it appears that there's some recovery. There's, there's not, there's not a significant jump in the vegetation change. What we've also been doing is looking back at the 1977 radio fire and taking some cues from how that side of Mount Eldon has or has not recovered. You know, the whole top of Mount Eldon used to be mixed conifer, and it's grassland now. So there's, there's some cues that we can take from that and apply towards museum and get it, an approximate trend that we think might, may happen. That's, so that's what we're kind of taking into a consideration with, with all of these, with how the future conditions may affect drainage projects that are happening now downstream. This summer, this is a graph of storm, monsoonal totals over the last five or six years. And so if you look at the, the two, these are individual gauges that you see going across, and the two bars, the teal and the orange bar in the middle, that is your 20, '21 and '22 monsoon seasons, and then '23 was low again, '24 is the purple. And what we saw specifically this year was a lot of longer-duration, lower-intensity storms. So, so we are up close to normal, but, but those storms weren't very intense, except for a few outliers, and that drives what, what happens downstream. One of those storms, June 25th, this is probably the biggest, biggest event we had in the museum fire scar, and this is one of those. I saw the gauges going, and I jumped in the truck, and I was going out to see what was happening, and not a lot happened. So come away scratching our heads going, why? Well, so we take the gauge data, overlay it with the radar data of actually what happened, and you could see this storm just bounced right along the edge of the museum fire scar. And so hit the Dry Lake Hills hard, just touched that gauge on the upper edge of the, the fire scar, and so not a lot happened down below that. Some other storms, this, what this does, just lays out some of our bigger storm events. So each of these images you see on the right side are precipitation totals for that storm event per the four gauges that are up in the museum fire. So a lot of, a lot of less than one-inch storm events, and in our modeling, if you're not getting above that one inch, then generally, there's not a ton of water that's going to come off the fire. It's when you start getting over a threshold into the one to two that we've seen really cause impacts downstream. So that kind of big-picture explanation of maybe why what we saw, maybe why we didn't see as much as we did this year. And so we'll continue, continue to track that as the monsoons go on for the next years. These are some examples of even a peak flow between 2022 and 2024 in fairly similar-ish storm events. Water, watershed saturation was a little bit different, I think, between the two, but we saw more peak flow in '22 than we did in '24 on, on a storm event that I would have thought would have predicted some similar results. So what we're seeing is that while the vegetation doesn't look like it's changing a lot, there, there is some recovery happening in the watershed. And, and so, so we're tracking that as time goes on and use that to, to help inform. And really, as this curve goes, basically, the, as watershed recovers, right, you're going to end up with a new normal, which is not necessarily pre-fire, but it's going to provide a varying level of the amount of discharge or the, the storm event, you'll be able to handle a bigger storm event with the infrastructure we're handling, we're building downstream. And with that, I will turn it over to Trevor to carry it on.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Members of council, Trevor Henry. I am the Capitol Improvement Engineer, and I've been helping out the team in the interim for about six months. In, in a normal circumstance, we would have a Capitol PM working here, helping the team move this along, but we've had a vacancy, and so I've been filling out as best I can. But a lot of the work goes to the team. Julie Lee has been working with the city in that fashion, and so a lot of that effort is on her shoulders, so she's been doing a great job. This is a map you've seen before. It's a, as the title suggests, it's a suite of projects. They've worked integrally together, kind of working together as they go from upstream to downstream. One thing that I've seen or that has been new to this map is on the bottom portion, you see a completed key flood projects. So as we begin working on this project, different phases have been completed. So before, or since our last update back in May, the team has brought to you for your consideration two GMPs. We've also had one project completed, which is the Grandview Drive reconstruction. There was a final walkthrough about three weeks ago, so that portion is done, and it will continue to, we'll fill out that section there of projects that have been completed. And as Scott had mentioned before, there have been, there has been a lot of work going on, a lot of design and construction projects. Our construction manager at risk continues to work on future GMPs and bringing to our attention, we're working through those cost estimates. It's my understanding that the team will bring before you possibly next month another GMP, so we're continuing to work towards that completion. So I just wanted to provide this key map for you, and then now we'll turn it over to Julie to continue on with the updates.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. All right, so as for schedule, you've seen this slide before, but the boxes have changed because we have moved more things into the completed, that top row, and we've actually shifted a few things around in the construction. So you'll see in the 2026 box, the bottom right corner is final cleanup and closeout. We are making great progress. Last time we were in front of you in July, we had projects in that 2026 box. We're shifting that over to the 2025 box and pushing really hard to get this work done. So there is one key project in there that we, we need, just want to be sensitive to private property issues and going through that process, so we're allowing that some time, so we have a little bit of flexibility in that, but we're really wanting to hit that 2025 target. All right, so some more good news related to budget. So Proposition 441 was $26 million. You see our total estimated project cost today of $39 million. This does not include the portion, the pieces of work that was done, that were done before we started the suite of projects. So the Dortha Crossing, for example, and the shot creed of that channel between Cedar and Dortha, that's not in that, this list here. That was a few million dollars that was invested prior to us starting this full suite of projects. Funding sources, like I said, Prop 441, $26 million. We have contributions from Water Services. We've been able to replace some aging facilities as we're going through their streets, has contributed through the Road Repair and Street Safety Program. This helped support the surface improvements on Grandview, which were scheduled to be repaired at some point in the very near future because the pavement was failing, so contribution there. Proposition 419, we have about a half a million coming in. We're able to add value because we're out there, let's add some sidewalks. While Eagle Mountain is constructing, let's build some sidewalks where they don't exist today, so Proposition 419 can make a contribution. We have a partnership with the Forest Service and a contribution of matching funds, $3.5 million to the Wedge Basin. That's what's coming before you in December in GMP 5. Then we have a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Cedar Crossing, a million-dollar contribution there. That's a GMP that you've already improved, and that's going to construction here very soon. We also have the Army Corps with the Killip Inlet of a million and a half dollars. And then the, the final one on the, the funding sources that have been confirmed, the FEMA, DEMA, this is the Pondrosa Park area, this is the portion of work that is on private property, that I know that you're supporting some of those conversations. So a total of $40 million, and we're still waiting on one more grant, and that is the secondary outlet at the Killip Basins for 1.7, and I have not heard yet, and, nope, I see Ed has not heard yet as of today. Okay. All right. So when we started Sandbag Alley on Grandview Drive, and now we've got... So we had the team go out and do an aerial of, of the completed Grandview Drive projects. We've had some great feedback from the neighborhood. We tested it out a couple times. There were flows going down the street, and I had a couple of people email, I said, Trevor, email and call and just say, this is fantastic, we're so pleased, things that just completely transformed the neighborhood. This is great. We are now working with Public Works on how snow removal operations are going to happen this, this coming winter. All the cul-de-sacs are done, and there is new sewer and water infrastructure on all, underneath all of that new pavement. Good stuff. All right. We have been working on the Wedge Storm Drain, so this is a five-foot diameter concrete pipe that is marching its way up Linda Vista right now. That is going to connect Spruce Wash to the wedge piece. We are working on Linda Vista Crossing, and we have a major excavation. This is clearly why the, the street is closed. We have poured the base of that future arch culvert, so we replaced two smaller diameter pipes with a large arch culvert in this section. This piece right here, you kind of see the step up in the slab, that's, that's the section where we're sending it off to the wedge, so we're going to pick up some of that water and send it in a pipe out to the wedge. We are working in the channel of Spruce Wash to relocate the, the gas main, so partnering with Unisource and their contractor to do this work. And future, so Cedar Avenue Crossing, this is the piece that is starting very soon. It's going to be replacement of this box culvert. In anticipation of replacement of this box culvert, we need to relocate some utilities. That's what's going to happen. So you're going to see traffic control getting set up on Cedar very soon. One important thing to... One important thing to know is that we can do, um, this work in Cedar without closing any lanes. We can maintain two lanes of traffic on Cedar and be able to do this work, which is great because the pavement is wide enough for us to do so. So you'll see utility replacements starting very soon this month. And then once spring comes around, you'll see the box begin construction. Still in the works is the Arroyo Seco to Dorothea Channel. This is tied to that FEMA DEMA grant that we're still working with the private property owner on. It's all tied together. Same with the Arroyo Seco Inlets. These are, um, these are your 2025 projects. And then Killip Basin Inlet, again, all tied together. And then the Killip Basin Outlet, this is the grant that we're waiting to hear on. And that's going to pick up that little bit of excess flow coming out of the Killip Basins and send it into, um, underground infrastructure that exists. All right. So as far as traffic control, you know, we get emails and calls pretty regularly about when Linda Vista is going to open. It's probably our most popular question. It is closed through spring 2025. You can see we're replacing all of that or we're adding that new five-foot diameter storm drain through there. That's a lot of work, um, but we're, we're targeting spring. It's weather dependent, kind of seeing how this, um, you know, pushing really hard, but, you know, recognizing we've got winter ahead of us and, um, just tracking that schedule, we'll keep you posted. We are able to maintain pedestrian and bike access through the work zone. So we built a temporary path that went around. We've heard some folks, you know, say, this has really been a real lifesaver because, you know, my kid walks from school and I can pick him up on one side instead of having to drive all the way around. So I think that the community appreciates, um, that effort. Right, uh, as far as communications, we have a weekly e-newsletter that goes out. Mr. Clifton had some suggestions a few weeks ago or last month. And so we've sort of reinvented that communication with the community. So it's really focused on what's happening the week ahead with some photos. We have done many door hangers, a handful of news releases. And then we tried something new last month, uh, when it was a little bit warmer. We did a meet in the street with folks and we got to ask them questions and they provided us some feedback. And so some of the questions we asked them were, hey, how is the communication working? What works best for you? Do you, you know, do you prefer mail? Do you prefer the e-newsletters or the door hangers? So we got some good feedback on that. We heard that dust control is, is kind of a concern for them. So we ramped up our dust control operations, doing it twice a day to help with that. So just some really good feedback. And then we also attended the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association. You know, the, the piece there is, um, you know, Ponderosa, Ponderosa Park and getting that project moving forward to revamp the park. And so being able to tie our project with the plans for the revamping of that park. So we just wanted to communicate with the Neighborhood Association. This is kind of tied to grant funding and private property. And so we need to go through a process and be respectful of that. And, you know, we're trying to, um, we're trying to get to that point where we can design and envision that new park. So this is the last slide I have for Spruce Wash. And I know Ed's going to come up here and talk about Schultz Creek. Mayor, would you like to do any questions now or just keep going?
Let's do questions now because I have one. Counsel, any questions? This is for either you, I think, or Trevor. We had a resident reach out who had some concerns about when the gas line was being worked on in the, in the, um, area behind her home. Has, hopefully that has been taken care of. And did we put in place some steps to make sure that that, or to try to not let that happen again?
Anybody answer this? Okay. Mayor, uh, yes, we did. We've had some follow-up conversations with that property owner. We've had follow-up meetings with the contractor and with Unisource to talk about the process and the protocol. And I think the key thing for us is, um, just given the division of work, you know, in different disciplines, is making sure that there is a licensed plumber that is on call and on standby and ready should anything like this happen again. And, um, fortunately, that, um, particular resident has been very active and engaged in this process. So it's great having that conversation of, hey, what do you think? Or what do you think about doing this way? And, um, that's been very helpful. So yes, we have.
Wonderful, thank you. If there are no additional questions, we can move on.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Uh, so we're going to shift to the other fire and the other side of the city. Uh, so a quick discussion on Schultz Creek and a quick celebration of, of the progress we've made there. Uh, I'm not going to belabor the fact or the point that we've had a whole series of projects from the burn scar all the way down to the Rio de Flag and then even, even down to Francis Short Pond over the last two years. A real success story to be able to come here two years after the fire and say that we have, and this is very rare to say anywhere, that we've completely mitigated that post-fire flood threat. Now that's not to say there won't be flooding, but, uh, for that post-fire threat, that elevated threat, we have completely mitigated it. Obviously, that the biggest one that we have going on or did have going on, was the Highway 180 culvert, roughly $7 million, fully funded through that state bill 1720 with Bannekey's Construction as our C Mar. So that is now substantially complete. What you're seeing here in the video is that dual, that box culvert, the eight-by-five culvert that goes from near the American Conservation Experience under Highway 180 through Grand Canyon Trust property, uh, and then to a new open channel before it meets the Rio de Flag. So with that conveyance that you're seeing here, as well as those Schultz Creek basins that we put in 2022, uh, we can take the full flow, uh, the full 100-year flow of Schultz Creek yet again. So that's a huge, uh, success story. We will be working in the future on remapping the floodplain. So it's the FEMA floodplain, not, not the post-fire floodplain. Another success story, uh, through Cocon United States. So we'll be working on that, uh, in the next year or two. We do have a couple of grants out for that right now. Let's see if I can, there we go. I'm going to move through these really quickly because these are very hard to see on a screen. But these are, are before the construction projects that proposed and then that changed. This is the flood risk. It's against the J. Foller models. A- and we have two of these in a row. And, and really kind of the point is that we are taking that community, that, that neighborhood out of that flood threat from flows from outside the city. So I should clarify that. We're sol- not solving, we are mitigating the flows that come off of the mountain, uh, through these neighborhoods. There are obviously still localized flood threats that you've heard about in the past and that we are working through, um, actively. Also a great success story, if you drive through Cocon United States, Stavon Way, you won't see any sandbags anymore. And that's, that's really amazing to see, no sandbags and, and no barriers. So this was removed this fall through, uh, both volunteer efforts as well as through some of our contractors. We did have one really great day, um, of volunteer support out there, number of, uh, city staff. Actually, I believe that is your city manager there on the left with the, uh, with the wheelbarrow. We're out there and, and removing those sandbags. So a great story and we hope to, to, uh, duplicate that in Spruce Wash and Sunnyside in the next year or two and that'd be amazing to see. Where did all those sandbags go? It was well over a million sandbags. We have repurposed that. So we did use a, what's called a trommel screen. It's kind of like a large barrel screen to separate out the sandbags and the pallets from the cinders. So the cinders are being reused, uh, for other city projects. And then the actual sandbags and the pallet material, uh, went to the landfill. And it's a much smaller amount of material that had to go to the landfill. So, uh, also a very innovative use here by Joe Dirt and Scott, I believe, hooked us up with them. I think it was Scott. So, uh, yeah, kudos to Scott and to their team to bringing them out. Um, very briefly, I'll just have one slide on this. There were some, some minor, it wasn't minor to those residents, but minor in the community sense, floods in 2024. None of them were related to post-fire flooding, but we should mention, uh, that we did have some on Mead Lane, on Lockett Drive, Country Club, and then the Fox Glen area. Uh, and these were just from small microbursts during the monsoon season. And just a reminder that flooding does occur outside of these post-fire environments. So we're spending a lot of time here talking about spruce and Schultz, uh, for good reason. I know those areas have a much heightened flood risk than the other parts of the neighborhood. But that's not to say that we don't still see flooding, uh, in those areas. Uh, also a brief, uh, mention here, so we were talking budget. You know, we went from $26 million for that proposition up to, uh, $40 million for Spruce Wash. Lots of budget needs over on Schultz Creek and then budget needs as well for some of these other areas that are outside the post-fire environment. So we've been very active on the legislative side, uh, worth getting our congressional directed spendings or earmarks, if you want to call them that still, and continue to push for grants. So right now we have about $7 million of external funding still out there. That's been proposed, uh, does look hopeful. But that is still in the, in the progress of getting those grant agreements with the city. Uh, I, I can tell you truthfully, I don't know how that will work in the future with the new presidential administration. Uh, I do know that there will be a, a large push to, to restrict fund, funding at the federal level. So, uh, we'll make the, the biggest push we can to, to get that money, uh, to the city in the next few months. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Sustainability. So either Brady or Jenner or both, uh, will talk about some of our great, uh, flood prevention, flood resilience grants, uh, here at the city. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brady Henderson. I am an Arizona Climate Resiliency Corps member, working with the Flagstaff Sustainability Office. And today I'm here to speak to you on the city's flood prevention grant program. So one of the most rewarding parts of this, working with this program has been connecting directly with community members. For instance, during a day of door-to-door outreach, I met with family digging around their home, still dealing with some of the challenges from flooding. After discussing their situation and learning about their unique needs, we developed a tailored plan that leveraged resources and support available through this grant program to address their specific concerns. This experience is just one example of households who have gone through a similar process and utilized assistance through this grant program. So this program offers community members up to $7,500 to drive floodproof their home. This includes floodgates used on windows or doors. Excuse me. These are hard barriers used to prevent water seepage through these openings. In my time talking to community members, this has been the most popular option, primarily due to the ease of storage and its convenience in assembly, with some prog- products able to be installed in under five minutes. Additionally, funding can be used to purchase sealants used to prevent seepage through cracks in cinder blocks or slab foundations. And finally, the grant can be used for temporary flood barriers. These barriers prevent seepage into specific areas of the property. Compared to sandbags, these measures are more durable, have a longer lifespan, and are easier and faster to deploy. This program is available to both homeowners and renters. To apply online, visit www dot Flagstaff AZ, flagstaffaz.gov forward slash floodproof, or apply in person at the Flagstaff Sustainability Office. And with that, I would like to open that to any questions? Any others? Thank you.
Counsel Member Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments and a one question for you, sustainability. For the renters, you said this grant is available for them as well. So any of those, uh, whether it's sealant for the foundation, they, a renter can request it and be applied to their house or apartment they're renting?
Yes, there is a, like, homeowner's agreement with the landlord that's required, but it's still available to the renters.
Thank you. So Ed, and, and the team. I had some doubts that we would do all of this, um, in this amount of time. So I just want to congratulate you and your team, just everybody that it encompasses. I know it was a big lift. And I honestly am just shocked, surprised pleasantly that, um, we've done so much in such little time. So just kudos to you and your team and to everybody putting this as a top priority and getting so much done. It just, I get frustrated with the speed of government a lot. I say it a lot up here and this, um, makes me a believer again. So thank you.
I don't see any additional questions or comments. Yes, I believe so. Right where it questions?
Yep.
Yeah. Counsel Member House?
Sorry, I was just making sure that we were done with all the presentations. I just wanted to say kudos and thanks to the full team, um, for all of this, this great work. It's really exciting to see all of this done. And, um, also just sharing that we, um, or I was just recently reminded of the importance of, of noting, um, and saying thank you also to the community members who have been not only, um, uh, patient and collaborative through this process, but also really stepped up to help and serve each other, um, through all of this as, as so many of these projects were being brought to fruition. So I know that, uh, you and, and all of your teams have really, um, uh, expressed that a lot on, on your side. But I think it's also important to kind of double that recognition from ours as well. But just really impressed with all of this great work and, and look forward to seeing, um, the rest of it brought to completion as well. So thank you all.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you. We'll see you next year, probably.
All right, next up, item number nine, Public Works Streets Section 2024 Snow Operations Presentation and Discussion.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sorry, we're jumping ahead here. Uh, I want to thank you for the time, uh, to, uh, go over our snow operations kind of outlook for this year. I like to do this at the beginning of every snow season, kind of set the tone for what are we expecting from our teams? How do we look at this moving forward? And then how did we reflect on the year before? So we'll kick it off here. Uh, so my name is Sam Beckett, I serve as the Streets Director. I also have to my right here, Justin Cuevas, who's serving as one of our acting managers in Public Works, um, here with us today too. As we go through the presentation today, again, we'll go through kind of a rear view. What happened last year? Last year, if you don't remember, we made some pretty significant changes to our snow operations. So I wanted to follow up with you all and just kind of go over what went well? What did we see for improvement areas and how did we incorporate that moving forward? We're going to talk about just basic structure, some staffing, equipment. Then we'll get into what are the responsibilities of the Streets Section when we get into snow operations? How do we coordinate that with everybody? How do we do our pre-coordination beforehand? And then at the end of it, what do we do after the snow stops? And, uh, but we'll get into that as we go. So in the, uh, 2023, 2024 winter season, we had a pretty light snow season. I say that recognizing we had a couple of pretty good events. But overall, we came in fairly significantly lower than we did the year before. And on our average, we were, we were almost about average. So, um, not the best year for snow, uh, from that standpoint. From the streets standpoint, it was a really good year, knowing that we went into the season at 50% vacancy rate and we made some pretty significant operational changes. Some of those changes were we went from our standard two snow shift operations to three. And said, well, how would you break that out? How do you add another shift when you're down 50%? Well, we had to get kind of creative on what made sense. Part of that transition was pulling our heavy equipment. You've probably seen the motor graders, got six wheels on them. It's got a big steel blade underneath in the middle there. And then we also have our loaders, big front-end loaders that have snow plows on the front of them. And we separated that operation away from the standard snow plows, the big 10-wheel dump trucks, the six-wheel dump trucks you see running that in the downtown corridor. We split them apart. We did that on purpose. We also took that third shift and we moved it to the night operations. We did that because after looking at our operations over the last four or five years, we saw productivity just went up exponentially at night. We were able to leverage things like our parking ordinance. We have less people on the road, less people walking in the streets, less bicycles on the road. We just had less conflict moving operations to the night. In doing that, we saw that we, we made a really good dent in a lot of our operations on each one of these snowstorms, recognizing we were at 50% staff. So our hope is, as we go into this year, I want to give a huge shout out to our Streets, um, team who's been working really, really hard. Uh, we are staffed all but three positions in our technicians. Is that correct? We also have one vacant manager position, which is why we have, uh, a couple of acting managers out in Public Works. And depending on how that plays out, we have a lot of hope that we have some really good internal, internal talent. So we're hoping to see some, uh, internal promotions moving forward here. But we are in a much better spot staffing while... better spot staffing wise than we were last year. We want to continue moving forward with that transition in operations just because we saw the benefit of it. The other piece here was we changed our shift time on our truck operations, our snowplow operations from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That was the initial operational period, and then vice versa, running 24-hour coverage. We moved it to noon, to midnight. Our biggest transition in that was we saw significant conflicts with delayed starts. So anytime we'd see FUSD have a delayed start, it put everybody on the road at the same time we were coming in on shift change. And that put us in a really weird spot. So as we looked at that, we thought it would only make sense to make this transition a couple hours later. Gives us full coverage to ensure that those who do go to school or have a delayed start for work had better coverage getting around town. We saw some pretty, pretty good transition in that. Here's just a breakdown of how we see our transitions and how we see our shifts. We've got a day operations, which we consider from noon to 12:00 AM in the morning, and then our night operations, 12:00 AM, 12:00 PM. This is kind of a breakdown of staffing. We did try and adjust that based on our new staffing calculations, but definitely much better spot than last year. We're hoping to see some really good progress this year. We're going to keep this third shift. We found that it made a lot of sense to have one supervisor dedicated just to heavy equipment. It's a very specialty skill, skill set, and having somebody with that tenure and that veteran experience to work with that group in particular. This group here is also the group that makes the most progress in the neighborhoods. So our trucks will go through and keep the main and arterial routes open, but the graders and the loaders, those are the ones that get into the roads that the trucks just shouldn't be on or can't get into, or struggle to have that same maneuverability in those areas. This is the group that really makes a ton of neighborhood progress. Everybody else keeps the city moving. This is just a breakdown of some of the equipment we have. Overall, we've got 16 snow plows, eight motor graders, five front-end loaders. And then we have, some of you have probably seen it, it's a pretty cool old truck that works as a snow blower. And we use it a lot in the downtown corridor when we're picking up snow, you know, the 345 cul-de-sacs that we have that we try and clean up, but we hope our friend and best employee, the sun, helps get to it before we do, and more often than not, it does. Street staffing, this number here has even changed since the presentation, but again, much better spot than we were last year. Operationally, we have a team of 33 staff members, 80% staffing at this point, and it's the best we've seen in four years, which is great to see. With that said, we've got a lot of new faces and there is a ton of training going on. So as you see people out there, just know we're working with them. You're going to see some ride-alongs, you're going to see two people in a snowplow. That's all right. The intent of that is let's train them up, make sure we put them in the best possible position, and then that keeps everybody safe out there. I will note that we do have a vacant Streets Manager position. Like I said, we were able to find some internal team members who had a lot of interest in that position, and we've been rotating them through on an interim basis in hopes that we have that internal talent to help fill it. Unfortunately, I feel like we have more talent than we have positions, so I got to get real creative here real soon. And our, this one here doesn't seem like it's big of a deal, but it is. So our Administrative Specialist position is vacant. Our previous Administrative Specialist, who had her doctorate, has moved on to use that as an educator, and we are very excited for. With that said, that's going to really delay some of our community engagement as we move into the season and be able to help navigate any customer complaints or concerns we might have, or even education pieces. So we're doing our best to find that coverage internally in Public Works until we can fill that position, but it's proven to be more difficult than we thought. So day of, we get an event. This is kind of the walkthrough of what we do. The supervisors are monitoring 24 hours a day all season long. They, they get really close with their, their NOAA app on their phone, and it keeps them apprised of everything, and they're constantly watching. So even on those days when we see a light sheet of ice on the road, they're trying to pre-plan, how many people do we bring in to make sure we have some coverage for our ice hinders, yet still have an operation that day, not knowing what the afternoon's going to bring? It's quite the balance, and I give them a ton of credit for all the work that they do. Streets is responsible for plowing the 700 lane miles of roadway within the city. That equates to about 2,600 miles traveled to get every lane and every center, sorry, center median across the city plowed one time. So just a lot of miles traveled to get it all done, especially with 16 snow plows split into two different shifts. We also apply ice hinders. Our policy is, and we stand behind Council's decision to work with ice hinders. They have worked well for us, however, we know that it's a science and an art, if you will, with ice hinders. You can apply them, but they're good for about 10 to 15 minutes. We know that, that's what the industry tells us. They don't stick to ice as well. That's why we call them attraction aid, not a solution. So they simply help reduce some of that sliding risk, but we know it is not the answer. We, we fully hope that everybody takes their time and is, drives as cautiously as possible. We maintain traffic signals through that. Any signs that come down during these snow operations, the supervisors go out and try and replace them or get them pulled out of the, the roadways so they don't become an additional hazard. Any debris, anything like that, they work really hard to continue snow operations, yet stay up on those kind of items. Then we transition straight into snow hauling. That transition doesn't really take very long. We just keep going on that 24-hour coverage. We work mainly at night. That's where we see, again, most of our progress. However, we know it's a disruption to many who are trying to get some rest for their next day. We do our best to try and slow down those, those impacts and, and reduce them, but we know that it happens. Then unfortunately, every now and then, we usually get maybe one pothole, so we'll get out there and we'll try and get after that. Now, with that said, that's usually something we have to watch pretty significantly. The freeze thaw around here is what creates a ton of those. As it, as it freezes into the small cracks and crevices into the roadway, it will break out sections of road, and then once the water gets in there, as a tire impacts the water in the pothole, it just continues to blow out the aggregate. And then straight back into sweeping with ice hinders. So those operators who are driving snow plows go right back into 24-hour, seven-day week coverage for our sweeping. So our, our team works every year to go through and see what is best practice? What has changed? What have other cities found that works well that we could apply here? And we take all that, we review it in our snow manual is what we call it. It gets produced every year, gets handed out to our operations team. Our supervisors actually just met and had a, a meeting two weeks ago now, I think it was, two weeks ago, where we bring in all of our snow operators and all of our snow temps. They met from three in the afternoon till nine o'clock at night, just because that was the best time to get everybody wrangled in. And they review these kind of items. We go over best practices, we go over expectations, setting the tone for those who may not work for the city, but who come in as a snow temp, they still represent us, and they represent the logo of the City of the Flagstaff and for Public Works. We want to make sure that they understand that moving forward and that they are in a comfortable space as they, they go out into their operations. This document helps us review historical knowledge and how do we transition into the new phases and the new items that we might find out there for best practices. And it's, it's our guiding policy, if you will. This here is a breakdown of how we prioritize routes as we provide snow maps for all of our operations teams. We actually just created a new dashboard, which is phenomenal. I give IT a ton of credit, and Bailey Shotina, our analyst over in Public Works, who's created a link that no longer requires everyone to have a GIS, city GIS login. Now we have a dashboard where we can get our snow maps out to everybody else who isn't a city employee, and they can actually see what the route is, what the priority is. It helps keep them more in tune rather than printing them all off, keep them in the trucks in hopes that they bring them with them. We're hoping this just helps streamline the process as we move more into that digital age. Really good to see that come out this year. But as you see here, our priority routes are always mains, arterials, major hills throughout the city, the downtown core. Any FUSD or Mountain Line bus routes all fall on those top priority routes. Secondary routes are still in that, that order, but they, they start moving into our neighborhoods and the community areas. Residential streets, we say they're not plowed until there's more than four inches. I think for the most ti, most part, you're usually seeing our snow operations out there most likely well before that four-inch mark, but we know that that's kind of the benchmark we set of don't miss this, try and be ahead of it. It's kind of like a speed limit, right? We know we can go up to it, but you know, we don't want to, we don't want to wait until after that breaks over before we, we get out there. Here, cul-de-sacs is part of that as we get into the, the residential priorities and then secondary priorities. These areas here, this is the standard benchmark we've used for many years, and we calculate this each year based on what kind of volumes of snow are we seeing? What kind of community impacts are we seeing? As we all know, we're seeing transportation change consistently. There's growth in some areas, there's reduction in others. We have new communities coming online, just ensuring that we're meeting these, these thresholds here. Those three bottom ones are key. Post-event, so this is kind of the fun part, but unfortunately for these guys and our operators, it's on the heels of, you know, pretty significant events. If we're picking up snow, it's because we've had a lot of snow. So unfortunately for our team, it's a ton of additional effort, but it's meaningful and it's helpful for us. As we run out of snow storage in many places, not just our downtown core, but our neighborhoods get really tight. It becomes, becomes very cumbersome for our first responders to get through there, for buses to get through there. So we want to make sure we get out there and get after it as soon as possible. Let's see, a lot of, believe it or not, we see a lot of infrastructure damage during snow events, and so some of the team, as we start to catch up on our snow hauling operations, will move into that infrastructure repair. Signs are a big one. We start seeing those potholes in the roadways. The sooner we can get the water from ponding within those potholes, the better off we are in those areas to get ahead of some major road failures. And then obviously, the ice hender sweeping. I think it's always a good reminder for one plow truck to dump cinders. We usually put down about eight to 10 cubic yards of cinders. One sweeper can only pick up two cubic yards at a time. So when you start doing the ratio on that, it takes a lot longer to pick them up than it does to put them down. So we appreciate everybody's patience as we work through that every year, but we have a very dedicated and very good team of, of operators in sweeping. This one here, yeah, I was going to make changes to this. I presented this last year in the same format. However, as we look at this, I found that when you set a strategic vision, the best thing to do is to review it, and if it still aligns with your goals, to keep it, keep moving forward. It keeps everybody focused on their mission at hand, and we know that this is our continued vision. So this is where we're at today. We want to just continue to provide the most effective and safe snow operations to our community, enhance the best practices through training, proper equipment and staffing. And then our three, five-year goals are just ensure that we, we provide the best infrastructure possible to our community. With that, I'm here for any questions or comments you have as it relates to our snow operations.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I have a question on the separated bike lane pilot project. I know that's not why we're here, but how, how was it last winter? Did we make some strides on clearing that out? Was it easier? And then my comment, I notice on my travels, the candlesticks are not in place, and that worries me with the snow, with the cement. Someone's not going to know that there's a cement barrier there if we don't have those up.
Yeah, it is actually on their list to get caught up on those. So we're working on that as we speak. This operation here is one that we want to have some sort of priority service for, but we know it falls into a secondary service. That's the best we can commit to it. That hasn't changed yet. If we can get to a point where that transitions, we will fully make that transition. Right now, what we do is we try and keep our main arterial roads, our bus routes open first, and then as we get those caught up, we'll send two people back to the yard. We have two smaller pieces of equipment that we utilize for these areas, and then we'll go back and hit them. Now, on our snow routes like Butler Avenue, on the road itself, it has a truck constantly going back and forth. For us to get through those bike lanes, it takes about three hours to make one pass. So by the time we do get caught up, we usually get back in, make a pass, and then we wind up on the next shift. So it's continuing to try and stay ahead of that, but we know it's a difficult, difficult piece of infrastructure just to keep up and running with, even at fully staffed operations. But last year, we had minimal complaints on it. I think we've got to a point now where we've, I don't want to say reduced, but we've transitioned as much of it to reduce impacts on both sides, and then it's created a much smaller footprint for that team to, to try and keep up with the maintenance on it.
Thank you. And I have, last year I did notice an improvement, and I just appreciate your attention to it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. We're, we're definitely watching it.
Councilmember House.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Two questions for you. So first, I know you spoke about the staffing, and I've been seeing the updates or the, the postings for the temporary snow crews. So are you mostly staffed for that at this point, or are you still?
Yeah, no, from our temp snow status, we're, we're pretty low right now. What we're seeing is the construction industry isn't slowing down as much as it used to probably 10 years ago. The demand is high. Those drivers are just not, not as available as they used to be. I think our numbers now are about a dozen.
Yeah, about a dozen.
Yeah, so we're, we're down to about a dozen. There was a point where, you know, our goal would be to have 24 to 25 snow temps, and that would be our minimum, knowing that most of the time, they're not going to be able to put in a full shift, or they can't come in for a specific shift because they've got their other work. So our job, our goal, like I said, is to have that 24 number. We're about halfway there right now, and the ones that we have are, are dedicated, and they've been with us for a very long time, which is great. We're just not seeing a lot of new applications coming in. We're working to find a way to be a little bit more competitive. You know, the, the ADOT does the same thing and the county, and we're just trying to find ways to be more competitive with those two groups. But great question.
Thank you. Second question, and my last question is just, I know, maybe not last year, but maybe the year before, whenever there was the bigger snow season, there were a lot of community concerns, particularly around cul-de-sacs and, and the clearance of snow, the piling of snow and kind of the centers of those, and the low visibility that that created. Can you speak more to the plan for that going into this year or the next time there's a major snow event like that?
Yeah, for sure. So those areas, from a plowing standpoint, are usually one of the few that, that get done last, depending on where they're at in the route. Depending on the route, motor grader starts at one end, it could take entire shift, if not two, to get to them through that process. As it starts to stack up, we transition crews as fast as we can, but if we know there's a storm on the horizon, we can't strip down all of the snowplow trucks, which is what we have to do, to be able to get back into the neighborhood, to haul everything out, just to put them back together, to get back out there and snowplow the next day. So we have to really be strategic on that. It's also one, hard on the equipment. The, the fewer times we can pull those trucks apart, the longer they last. The other piece of that is, is recognizing we still have a job to do and finding that balance in there. It's really, really difficult sometimes. So when we see consistent storms just constantly hitting us, I don't have the equipment to get in there to be able to haul that snow out. So we try and find that balance where we can and prioritize as much as possible. We recognize that there's, there's definitely some improvement there if we can find that, but where we're currently at, we're, we're making as much progress as possible at this point. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, it's always so helpful to get these updates and just reminders, you know, we have so much information fed to us, you know, every day, especially on Tuesdays, and we, we're the front line a lot of times on getting people, you know, complaining or comment. And so this is really helpful and really equips us to, you know, give answers right away and, and, and just address those things. You know, this year, over at Mountain Line, we gave a, a pretty nice little bump for our CDL drivers, which I know then impacts other, you know, like the city. And, and we talked about this, I think, last year where- And, and we talked about this, I think, last year where, you know, it's hard to attract someone to come in and, you know, get out there at midnight when it's in a blizzard, when they could be flipping burgers or driving, you know, a regular bus and stuff. Um, and so, um, I know that that's really hard to, um, compete with. I'd like to just kind of put it out here openly that maybe we as a city should consider, for not just the temporary staff, but all the staff that has to work in this, these snow conditions and ice in the middle of the night and when it's freezing temperatures, to come up with some kind of temporary hazard pay. You know, a bump in pay when we're having to, um, be out there addressing the community's safety and, and ability to get to work and get to school and, and travel, that maybe there's something, Greg's ignoring me, but I, but I think that it's really a reality that we should, um, talk about and be serious about. Because I don't know, um, how you do find these temporary snow drivers with, there's so much competition for that skill. Not that I would, e- even if I could without a CDL license, go out and do that job. Cause that just seems really miserable and hard. Um, oh, here comes, come on down.
Yeah, I got you.
Did he stop you from saying something, Scott?
No. No, but thank you for asking. Nope, sorry, this is.
No, thank you. I'll, I'll, this one definitely approaches a conversation division-wide. So compensation is something the city has taken seriously. I know I sit on a number of committees where we talk about this often. Going through the market pay structures and what we've done in the last few years, the city has actually benefited so many employees, including our own, in these divisions. I don't want to underscore the importance of that. In addition, we have pay for performance. These all apply to our regular full-time employees and they're all very, very positive. So, um, I want to make sure I'm very careful here. Um, we know we want to be competitive. We want to be as competitive as possible. And you mentioned Mountain Line. They're one of our peer agencies we compare against. I think we offer a different type of job and we offer a different type of responsibility. We do have a snow stipend that we utilize, um, as an hourly rate bonus to operators that work within the ride-away and streets program. It is always hard though, because we also have mechanics that work on snow equipment and we have people that shovel snow and people that work in facilities. So, um, I think those types of pay structures are interesting to look at. I want to take a different position as a division director and take really good pride in taking care of our people. I know Sam would tell you the same thing. Our supervisors, we're trying to really move the needle on our culture, on our equipment, on the way we work and the way we structure our staffing. We think it is a different type of employment. Um, and I will tell you, it is not for everyone to drive, um, a snowplow in the middle of the night in the worst of conditions, but it's also not easy to shovel and to be a police officer on the street. So I, I, I hear you, but I also want to recognize that if I can take care of the employee and we as a city can commit to that employee, that is my preferred, uh, method first. And then we ask that employee to do a lot all year long. So whether it's a flood response, or a guardrail repair, or picking up your trash collection every day. Uh, I try to think about it a little bit more holistically, but, um, but try to avoid more of the just singular one-time fixes. So I, I don't demean the idea. I just, I do want to be cautious, uh, because I do think my commitment is to the entire division and to really try to improve conditions. And I will say, the city's been very, and you have been very committed to pay. And I think we've really worked hard and we have a lot of work yet to do. But, um, I do like where we are and would love to give everything, but we're in a really good spot in my opinion. Um, do you have anything to add to that? I know, where'd he go? How did you hide? Anyway, I, I appreciate letting you speak on the division perspective. It's a little, little bit different when it comes to compensation.
And I, and I appreciate that and, and you guys know it better than any of us. I just wanted to throw it out there because I know from our minimum wage, you know, pressures that we have here in the city to, um, high cost of living, to pressures from, you know, peer agencies. I, I appreciate what you said earlier, Sam, when you, when you talked about how you made some changes in the shifts and stuff. And that, you know, helped efficiencies and reduce the need for, you know, number of employees and staff on there. So you guys do a fabulous job. I, my intent was just to bring up the uncomfortable comment in case we get to that. Because probably not getting out of your driveway in the snow, if we have another big snow event like we did a couple of years ago, it will be on everybody's radar, right? So I just want to keep that dialogue going and just say that if we have to kind of think out of the box, that, you know, I, I'm supportive of listening and, and discussing those things.
You know, we really appreciate those comments.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, uh, thank you for the presentation. It's always interesting to hear about snow. Question, the, the snow, uh, plow drivers, they have a CDO license. Are they under the same kind of restrictions that over-the-road drivers are, that they can only drive or work so many hours? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a federal regulation that only allows them to work up to a certain point. We need to make sure that they are basically at home by that 16th hour. We, uh, best practice, we found that 14 hours is like absolute max. Operationally, we really start seeing a decline in just people's responsiveness, um, in their cognitive activity. After about 12 hours of snow operations, and especially at night, you know, you kind of wind up in a trance as you're watching that snow, trying to get through everything. So we, uh, we purposely design our shifts to fit within that 12-hour window. Knowing that if we ran over an hour or so, we have a little bit of leeway, but our number one importance is, uh, ensuring that our team is safe out there and that they're ready and rested for the next shift.
And, and we don't let them come back until that time has lapsed, right? That they, okay.
At minimum, they have to wait, uh, even during our disaster response stuff. They've got to wait eight hours before they can even operate another vehicle that requires a commercial license.
And then my last question, um, how do we prioritize the residential areas, uh, once we start on those? The neighborhoods. So how do we prioritize those neighborhoods? Which ones go first? Which ones go next? Is there any order to it, or is it, we start at one end of the city and work our way across? How does that work?
So the, uh, the goal is divide and conquer. So we'll send each truck out into their designated quadrant, if you will. And then, uh, just start working what have been identified as main arterial roads. So things that would cut through main corridors, through neighborhoods that, um, help with the egress. And, uh, anything that would be a priority route for any kind of our first responders, school buses, things like that, that are pre-designated routes that we've identified ahead of time, and those get a little higher priority service first. There are a lot of main roads, so when you think about it, if we're fully staffed and all is going well, we have five trucks on the east side of town, five trucks on the west side of town. And they're doing their best to keep up with everything. That's fully staffed. More realistically, we usually have three trucks on each side of town. We divide it right about Switzer Canyon. We have a supervisor that oversees each side, just to try and keep up with that, that pace. But the truck's goal is to mainly stay up on those main arterial routes. And then knowing that the heavy equipment's gonna come in. Now, when the heavy equipment comes in, we've kind of started and designed our routes. They're very strategically done. So our goal is to go through a route and never make a left-hand turn. That's a perfect world. With our snow graders, everything pushes the snow to the right-hand side. The wings are mounted to the right-hand side. So when you start thinking about a neighborhood like Ponderosa Trails, try and go through that neighborhood without ever making a left-hand turn. It's, uh, you start getting this redundancy and then you start losing efficiency. So they've, they, they even come to us each year and go, hey, you know, I get a new operator out there and they say, we should probably try this. Okay, if that works best for you, then make that transition and let's move on. But it's a constant work in, in progress to, uh, to find the best path through it. And then we know we have new subdivisions that'll be coming on here in the next couple of years. We're already trying to map those out. You know, Canyon Del Rio is a great example. It's gonna be a very large neighborhood as it, as it, um, comes onboard with divided roadways. So now we don't have that option, even if we needed that option. So really trying to figure out how do we fit through some of these corridors. But there's a lot of planning that goes into this process, uh, with our traffic engineering teams, um, with streets, with our parks and recreation department. It's, it's a lot of coordination. I wish I had a perfect answer for you, but we haven't found it yet. We're still working on it every year.
No, thank you. That, that really does help and I appreciate the presentation.
I have a couple of questions. This was touched upon, but I'd just like to state it again. I've had several people tell me that their road never gets plowed, or their cul-de-sac never gets plowed. And I don't have addresses. When they tell me this, it's usually at an event and, and I just take that anecdotal, um, information. What do you think you have put in place, or you will put in place, to ensure that every road in cul-de-sac gets plowed?
Well, I think a great example of that is, uh, the transition of our internal GIS maps to an external, um, tool. That helps a lot with our snow temps, especially as things transition or change, or we get new subdivisions, or they wind up plowing an area they've never plowed before. I'm not gonna sit here and say we've never missed a road. It does happen. And unfortunately, it happens more than we realize sometimes and then getting back after it. So we do appreciate, uh, more often than not, when people let us know and say, hey, you didn't make it up here, we'll do our best to get out there as soon as possible. There are plenty of times where we, uh, we have provided service in the area, but perhaps it wasn't quite, um, at the expectation and we apologize for that, but we're doing our best to keep up with it. More often than not, we see a lot of that in the big storms where, you know, we plow first thing in the morning and then within a couple of hours, it's completely covered. I think a great example is this picture here. Somebody said, just the other day as they were looking at the presentation, that's a great example. A bunch of cars buried. Those are actually operators' cars. They parked them before their snow shift. So just to, you know, I think we've all seen it. We've all lived here in Flagstaff long enough. It doesn't take long for it to accumulate. And, uh, we recognize that and we'll do our best to get back as fast as possible. We also, uh, utilize GPS tracking in all the vehicles, all the snowplow apparatus anyway. And, uh, we can go back and see, you know, where they timestamped in the area. A lot of our newer apparatus will tell us that the plow was up, or if the plow was down, if the cinder spreader was on. So surprisingly, the, uh, the detail we can get out of that has been really helpful, honestly, for the supervisors. Just from a overall management standpoint in the city, to be able to look on their phone or their tablet and go, all right, here's where everybody's at, without having to bug them on the radio every couple of minutes. So we try and leverage technology as much as we can, if that answers the question.
Thank you. And if a resident finds that their, that their road hasn't been plowed and they think it should have been, there's a phone number and there's also a, um, a form that you can fill out on the website, right? To alert pub, to alert streets to the fact that their road hasn't been plowed.
Exactly. Yeah, there's multiple ways to contact us. Like I said, we're divvying that up as much as possible right now. We usually run all that through one singular point, uh, which is our administrative specialist up front. And then she'll help divvy that out to the supervisors in charge. But, um, we're working on ensuring we have as much coverage as possible until that position is filled. But yeah, any of those points of contact, a phone call is great. Um, if they want to fill out the online form, that's great. I recognize sometimes a phone call is the easiest way. If we don't answer, leave a message, we'll get back with you.
Thank you. Um, and just a, um, I'd like to second the, um, encouragement for bike lanes to be cleared as quickly as possible. Uh, we hear about that a lot in the winter. And if you wouldn't mind, and I know that you weren't here, or I don't think you were here when the decision was made, because it was made some time ago, um, but just so that people understand that there has, um, been a decision not to use salt or a chemical de-icer, cause we always get that question every winter as well.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Yeah, that was, um, I think it was a very thought-out process as I went through and did my history on that. It was a well-discussed process, um, between council and staff, trying to understand what the best practice was moving forward. One, from an environmental standpoint, what makes the most sense. Two, operationally, um, how did that impact everything? And then lastly, which in this situation I think made the most sense, uh, last factor was financials. You know, what made the most sense moving forward. Uh, we do recognize that ADOT, um, does use, I would say de-icer, but they, they primarily use salt with, um, a pretreatment on the main corridors through town. So we will see that that tracks through the, the community, but that's something that's, uh, one of their procedures and their policies and their goal is to, to move vehicles and, uh, that's the best practice for them. For us, we found that ice cinders, when applied appropriately and often, um, have been very effective. And then us obviously trying to match operations to our highest impact points, um, was really key as we continue to move forward. But yeah, again, council decision on that, however, based on some really, really good feedback from staff and some really good conversations happened off of that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so, oh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Sam. Um, been on council six years now. I've, I think I reluct having this conversation at least six times. Real quick, I want to reiterate the, the, the plea to make sure bike lanes get cleared as quickly as possible. And I know I've told this story in, uh, up here already, but it's, it's remarkable to me to recognize, to realize how many pedestrians and cyclists there are in town, once the snow falls. They're always there, but they just kind of blend into the background, especially if you're driving down Milton. But on a heavy snowfall day, suddenly the snowbanks are just, they're being climbed upon by all sorts of pedestrians. Lot of students, lot of other people. And so these people are always there and they need to get back and forth just as much as anybody else does. So just want to put a finer point on that, um, and match that beat. The other question is, is really, well, it's a meta-question. What we do with cinders after the season. Is that a question for another discussion? Uh, can we talk about that a little bit more? I know this is an evolving process and it's something we've been trying to get better at. I do think that there's, are still areas of town where no one's taking responsibility for that cleanup. And those cinders stay there until June, July. Um, and I know you guys are thinking through that and I saw some correspondence going back and forth with respect to that, but let's talk about it.
Yeah, so, um, are you talking about cinders that wind up off the roadway?
Yeah, sidewalks, um, can become pretty dangerous and stay that way for long periods of time. There are just some areas of town where, you know, residents are supposed to take care of that, but they either don't or there's, there's, there's no responsible party. Even just last week, I saw a city crew cleaning up Woodlands Boulevard. Not just cinders, but a lot of fallen pine needles too. And that's the first time that that sidewalk has been cleared in, uh, in 2024. So, yeah, just help me think through that a little bit more. What are the resources going into that process?
For sure. Yeah, there's a couple of pieces to this, but I'm glad you bring it up. So for any privately owned or residential business-owned sidewalks, it would be that owner's responsibility to maintain a safe and passable walkway under the city ordinance. Part of that is shoveling snow in the situation of getting snow on there. The other part of that is, is when you wind up with ice cinders, you know, if we can find a way to sweep them off, or, you know, leaf blowers when they're not frozen to the ground, um, do work. If we can get it back to the roadway, we'll pick it up. So we've actually started, uh, working really closely with our Downtown Business Alliance, who's offered up and said, hey, if we started sweeping all these sidewalks out and these, these parkways in some areas where it has it, um, would you be willing to pick them up? Heck yeah, let us know. So those situations there where you maybe have a large storefront or a larger property, or even a smaller property. You say, hey, I swept all these into the road. Let us know. We'll make sure that we get our sweepers out in that area to come pick it up. If you can get it back to the roadway, that's really key. Anything that would be a city-owned sidewalk, that is a conversation we've been having about, um, how do we manage that moving forward? Where does that responsibility lie? We just had a really good conversation with, uh, you know, our pros team, uh, with community development and code enforcement and public works, trying to figure out how do we push the needle forward on those type of impacts, um, kind of like what you're talking about. We rely on a lot of our community partners to help do their part and we will come through and, um, do our part.
I think that's enough. Uh, listen, I, I understand that this is a process and it has been getting better year after year. I think there's less cinders to complain about in April, May, June and July, um, but it still does happen. I, I just wanted to give a little bit of voice to that.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the comment. We're, we're trying to figure that one out ourselves to, to make it better.
All right, um, seeing no more questions from council, we- we have an online commenter.
Mayor, Council, I have Keith Becker. Keith, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett and council members. I thank you for your service to our community. I got to put that out first. My name is Keith Becker, and I'm speaking as a citizen of Flagstaff for 47 years. I'm not, I haven't been speaking for 47 years, but I've been here for 47 years. The current snow removal plan does not work for Flagstaff citizens. It may work for the city, but it doesn't work for the citizens. It puts citizens' lives in danger. Work and health are at risk with unplowed so-called secondary street designations. I'll give an example. I have a neighbor who can't get through the secondary streets to get out to her dialysis appointments in her smart car. I have actually driven her several times because dialysis is life and death for her. My wife is legally blind and was homebound for almost five months in 2223 and one and a half months in 2324 seasons. I watched city plows putting five-foot-high berms purposely on corner crossings. The tiny handful of citizens shoveling their sidewalks could not and did not shovel through the massive corner berms, so sidewalk users were not able to cross streets and corners. They had to go mid-street, but only if sidewalks were clear. Otherwise, they had to walk in the street. Neighbors, a neighbor said, the same neighbor, said that one or two dialysis technicians could not make it to work. Many other citizens struggled to get to work in unplowed secondary streets. I request City Council to consider and discuss future changes to snow removal. Initials removal on primary streets only needs to change back to all streets all the time. All streets are primary to the poor citizens that live on them. Remove secondary primary street designations. Plowing was much better 20, 30, 40 years ago, before all that kind of stuff changed. I'm not sure when that actually changed. I also suggest that we change the two-inch start of snow removal like we did many years ago, not four. Many newer cars are lower to the ground for fuel efficiency and cannot go through four inches. And often, more snow and frozen snow is in the streets than four inches. A plowed primary street is totally useless if citizens can't go down their secondary street to get to the primary street. I ask City Council to consider approval to purchase, let's say, five more snowplows, as they can serve two purposes, because they can be used all year for different purposes. Eighty-eight percent staffing is terrible. I ask City Council to approve increasing operators to 150%, even if it requires significant raises in bonuses or whatever. Also, call for more temporary operators with significant hourly pay equal to the permanent staff. I ask City Council to approve funding for more maintenance staff to keep plows in top condition over the snow seasons.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Becker. And I will ask Sam to address a couple of the points that you made in your comments. Specifically, so in our next budget cycle, are you intending on asking for additional personnel or equipment? And also, do you feel like we have an effective method of recruiting to fill those positions that we already have that are open?
Yeah, so we'll start at the beginning here. It is something we are definitely looking at. I will acknowledge the fact that last year, we asked for no additional staff. It was really, really tough to come in to my leadership and ask them for additional staff when I only have 50% vacant, or 50% of my positions are vacant. So when I start looking at my responsibilities, our focus was, how do we bring and recruit new individuals into the organization that would be hungry to learn and work in this section? So we were as creative as possible. We put extra resources into recruitment. HR has done a ton of work with us, trying to be as, help us be as competitive as possible when we're going through this recruiting process. And frankly, we've seen some success out of that. Now, we fully intend on coming into this budget cycle in hopes to request a couple additional positions. We recognize that we also have to balance out our funds. So we're going to bring them in. I'm not going to say that they're modest ask, but we're trying to come in with a realistic approach to moving forward and meeting our strategic goals. So yeah, I think the answer is yes, we're looking at that. But we also wanted to recognize there were years where we didn't ask, and we really, really wanted to. It just didn't make sense, and it was really tough to justify that when we still needed to do some work on our side.
Thank you. And we have additional public commenters?
Mayor, I have Russ Randall. Russ, you may address Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Russ Randall. I'm here today as a private citizen to talk to you about accessibility and inclusivity relative to our city's snow removal. Accessibility and inclusivity in cities are very important because they provide livable, inclusive, and sustainable communities. Accessibility and inclusivity benefit people of all abilities, including with those with disabilities, the elderly folks, and even tourists. Accessibility and inclusivity improve the quality of life, including independence and social integration. Accessibility and inclusivity are basic human rights. And of course, accessibility and inclusivity benefit everyone. Accessible and inclusive cities design and build and maintain more intentionally inclusive infrastructure for vulnerable people. An accessible and inclusive city is barrier-free. It doesn't limit anyone's participation in everyday life. It allows people with disabilities to be active participation, participants. Ensuring that such accessibility and inclusivity are maintained in our city is important, because both people with disabilities and their neighbors will benefit. Accessible cities build and maintain structures and roads so as to maintain accessibility for all. This includes the removal of snow throughout the city in as timely a manner as possible, so that our disabled community can move about the city. For people with disabilities, this is a different, even more important need than for many others in our community. Many, many people with disabilities have physical needs that necessitate access to healthcare sites, including things like physical therapy and respiratory therapy, including things like dialysis. Without clear roads that provide this access, health challenges are only increased. And sometimes those health challenges are increased to the point of death. Cities such as ours have a legal responsibility to build and maintain accessible and inclusive spaces, including our roads. As a private citizen, I encourage the City Council to continue to direct city staff to fulfill the requirements of this legal responsibility. Doing so will be in the best interest of all our city's citizens. Thank you for listening today.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. We have one more commenter.
Mayor, our next, our last commenter is going to be Rachel Semiconda. Rachel, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Rachel Semiconda, and I, too, am coming before you as a private citizen today. I'm here to also talk about this snow issues. I am a citizen in a wheelchair. And there have been times in the 2223 and 202324 snow seasons that I have not been able to access quite a few of my medical appointments. My primary care physician is on what would be termed as a secondary street. And so it didn't get plowed. And I drive a Kia Soul. And I missed three appointments because of that. And I've got some complex medical needs. And so I would urge you also, as Mr. Becker said, to consider maybe looking at changing or somehow figuring out how to make it less primary and secondary streets, because a lot of doctors, a lot of schools are on second, what are, secondary streets. So I'm asking that you all look at that. My biggest, I've got two other things. I would like to know the number, the phone number for citizen complaints and the form. The form is not ADA-friendly, and differently-abled citizens have a hard time accessing everything within the city website. So I would encourage that somebody look at that, maybe just for the snow season, and figure out what they can do. The other thing is, I'm not seeing a lot of interaction in working with other departments for things like enforcement, compliance, that sort of thing. I happen to live on Solier, and it, I believe that it took until February or so for the sidewalk to be cleaned. And I know that some of that is residential responsibility, but I didn't see much of it done where the city was needed to do action as well. The last thing, and probably the most important thing for me, is the ADA snowplow training. I didn't hear Mr. Beckett talk at all about any type of ADA training for drivers and for temps. And I think that that is absolutely essential going forward, because just as Mr. Becker said, there are times when I couldn't get to the curb access the cutaway, and I couldn't get to access alleyways because I couldn't, because there was snow right in front of it. So the snowplow drivers need to understand their ADA requirements as well. The last thing really quickly is immediate blitz, and temporary agencies are good for temporary workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to any of those, any of those statements, specifically about the primary and secondary? And whether you've, whether you all have maybe mapped some streets that are considered secondary that might have more medical services located on them? And just kind of how that plays into your planning for clearing?
Yeah, our goal is to hopefully get to every road in the city. We recognize that there's a lot of people out there that all have needs to try and get somewhere. Our goal is to try and tackle that larger strategic vision of helping as many people as possible. I know that from the PROS standpoint, they help out with the Courtesy Berm Removal Program. I know Sustainability works with their Snow Angels program they kicked off last year, which I think I'm saying that wrong. I might have changed the title, but I think that presentation is to come. But from a streets transportation standpoint, our goal has always been designated to get people in and out of key areas. Now, we recognize that there's going to be secondary roads that I'd love to get to sooner. The reason we do first, second, and third priority roads is we can only get to so much so fast. And it's always going to unfortunately be that scenario. So our goal is to continue to move forward. Part of that ask for staffing is in hopes to move forward. But we also recognize we're always going to have limitations. We are working to keep up with the growing city pace. I feel like we've done a really good job at realigning some of our programs to try and make better progress in different scenarios, not just winter operations, but obviously in winter operations. And there's certain things that we try and help with, and then we try and connect people with resources that can help them outside of the roadway as often as we can.
Thank you. And do you know the number right off the top of your head that people would call if they had a concern?
Yeah, so our Public Works main line is 928-213-2100. So they can call that one there. I'll get with the customer service desk. They're the ones that actually house the complaint forms and the customer request forms, if you will. And so I'll speak with them on that. But that's not something that we house. But we work really closely with that group. They pass a lot of information back and forth.
Thank you. And to our public affairs team, if we could just make sure we include this kind of information in our rotation of social media throughout the winter. And also, as we are, I know we're looking at revamping our website. So maybe, well, definitely having an eye toward being ADA compliant and as accessible as possible. And I see that we have a question from Councilmember Harris.
I do know that there is some software out there that will transfer regular forms for people who are differently-abled. And I don't know if that's part of the plan, Mayor, but I know at the university years ago, we had to do that across all divisions and departments. So just as FYI. But my question is regarding emergency vehicles, trying to get to people on streets that have not been plowed. Do we have a plan? Does that, is that an issue? Are emergency vehicles equipped to do that? If not, what's the plan in case they can't, you know? That's just curious, just curious.
Yeah, so we actually keep really close relationships with all of our other partners here within the city, all of our other divisions. I met with the police chief today. You know, we were talking about several issues across the city. A lot of those discussions are, are we communicating well? Do the right people have the right numbers? It is a very rare, I mean, an extremely rare occasion I've ever heard of, us not being able to support a first responder getting into an area, or them not being able to get in there themselves. They've done a really good job at upfitting our fire engines with chain apparatus, where they don't actually have to get out and always chain everything. They have some automated systems on there. You know, I know PD has been moving towards vehicles that make more sense in our climate, and ensuring that they can get out there as often and as fast as possible. And same with Guardian. I know they put in a ton of effort to make sure they're well-prepared. And then we do our best. And usually, if they need help, they give us a call. And that's always a first priority of public safety. If life safety is in question, we'll spin off of what we're doing, and we'll go straight to that problem.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Beckett kind of alluded to it after I put my name in the queue. But I just want to reiterate that the city does have a program to help clear that berm out of people's driveway if they're elderly or physically challenged in some other way. And I don't know where we call to get on that list, but it does exist. So I presume that if they don't know where to call, they could call that number you already gave us. And they could make, give the person direction on how to apply. Thank you.
Yeah, we could forward them on over. Our Parks and Recreation Department houses that, and their team does a phenomenal job. After all the snow plowing is completed, they'll come through, if you qualify in that program, and then they'll help clear the berm in front of your driveway. No, it's a great point.
All right, any additional questions? You work in an area that is of great concern to the council and to the public. So thank you. And I appreciate, I appreciate how quickly you answer questions, especially in the dead of winter, when they're coming at you very rapidly.
Yeah, I find that people usually prefer a quick and precise answer, if we can. So we try and provide good, timely information in hopes that they can help understand where the situation is. And sometimes we got to get out there and provide some additional service. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. All right, we are moving down to item number 10, which is the discussion of nuisance noise and community commercial zoning codes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to kick this discussion off by just going through some of the resources that we've included in the packet today to help with this discussion. A quick review of our background. December of 2022, we adopted the Vehicle Noise Ordinance. And this is when we started that combined work group on the nuisance noise. In September of 2024, we had a discussion about the potential updates to the Nuisance Noise Ordinance. October, we implemented some of that feedback for further consideration. And then later in October, we decided to pause for a moment on the Nuisance Noise Ordinance Um, and then later in October, um, we decided to pause for a moment on the nuisance noise ordinance while we looked at our community commercial zoning code. Um, so that brings us to today. Um, there was a, uh, council communication report, um, where we included, um, the community, uh, information on the zoning, um, but wanted to first start with our nuisance noise city code. Um, just as a reminder of where we left off, um, the regulations would apply Sunday through Thursday between midnight and six AM and Friday and Saturday between one and seven AM. Uh, again, we, uh, updated the definition to say it's unlawful to make or permit to be made a sustained or pervasive noise that causes unreasonable disturbances of the peaceful enjoyment of another person, um, defined pervasive and sustained. Um, and then lastly, we began a conversation on civil penalties, um, that are still working through this language. Moving on to the community commercial zone, um, again, provided that council communication that included enforcement of existing zoning code provisions. Um, also included that zoning code in comparison to the police code, looking at Private Property Rights Protection Act Proposition 207, the legal non-conforming standards, as well as the uniformity provisions. Um, looked at zoning code compliance, um, and then also potential timeframes for amending that zoning code. And so today we come before you, um, as staff, um, with these two resources to be able to answer questions, provide additional information, um, and help, uh, with this discussion.
Thank you. All right. So we will take council questions before we get into any discussion. And then, um, I have some public comments and some online commenters as well. So, council, any questions on this? Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I obviously read the, uh, the transmittal from, uh, Mr. Folk. And it basically says that, you know, this is not a zoning code issue. Well, we're not asking this to be a zoning code issue. There, there was a suggestion floated that we, uh, applied different standards in different areas. Now, I'll point out that staff brought to us a couple of years ago when we were talking about, using a measurement method, you know, in decibels. Uh, and staff brought to us different, um, allowable noise levels for three different categories. And they were called, and this is an exact quote, residential, commercial, and industrial. So if this worked two years ago, why doesn't it work now? That's my first question.
Tiffany, would you like to take that one?
I'm going to try. So, um, overall, you know, zoning codes are sort of little complex animals that live under a whole different set of rules and regulations, um, themselves, right? So, um, uh, the reason why maybe using zoning districts works maybe less better than per se land use categories. It's really easy for, um, somebody in the enforcement provision, I always like to say compliance rather than enforcement, whoever that enforcing officer may be, um, to easily understand what the differential between that land use is, whether it's, it's, um, commercial, industrial, or residential, just based on that alone, rather than trying to use zoning categories. So I believe that even when decibels or standards were trying to be applied, it was not to say the individual land uses were tied to provisions within the zoning code. Um, you know, the, the biggest issue we face with using the provisions of the zoning code is, um, that Private Properties Protection Act, that Prop 207. Um, and what happens if and when a property owner decides that maybe this really is an enforcement leg of the zoning code? So in a lot of ways, it's, it's much better to divorce the zoning code standards. It's still possible to use things like residential, industrial, and commercial in, in descriptive ways if that's appropriate. The most important thing is, is no matter how you treat or how you categorize, you want to make sure you're doing it evenly and consistently. And it applies to all properties broadly, um, as well. I hope that helps the answer.
So to continue, um, I'll leave it up to Sterling Solomon to say if we should or should not reference a, you know, a certain zone like community commercial in this case. Um, but if we decide we can't do that, I presume then we could tie it to, say, residential and commercial and maybe not to industrial. So I guess that's my response to that, uh, question. And of course, I don't know where the council is on this. The other option is we would apply these, whatever criteria we end up using for every zone across the city. So those are two possibilities that I see in my mind. I'll leave it at that. I have some other questions, but I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Sweet, and just, I want to get through all the questions first before council has its deliberations.
Thank you. And this is for Tiffany. So I've been going back and forth on this, as we all have, and trying to figure out how to flip the script that we've been talking about and honoring the issue that's going on and not affecting what I believe is the heart of our city and our downtown. When you are downtown, you're expecting vibrancy, noise, music, um, hustle and bustle. When you're on the south side, I do understand you're in single historic residential homes that have been there. The businesses have changed. And how do we honor that while we don't affect the core of our, our city? So Tiffany, my question is, is there a way to, um, have different hours of the noise ordinance in the downtown, maybe using the boundaries of, let's say, the Downtown Business Alliance? They are, they self-tax themselves. It's a different vibe. It's a different, what I consider a district. And I understand why the zoning may not be the right route. Is there a different way that we can tackle this?
That's a great question. And yeah, the answer is yes. Um, and in fact, the conversation you just had before is that we were just looking at the, um, parking, snow parking ordinance. And it, for example, has specific exemptions based on streets. And there are specific exemptions built in specifically for the downtown. Um, so it's not out of the norm to see that. Um, we do do it in the zoning code. We do it a little bit less. We do it in one instance where we have a jurisdictional boundary. It's not an overlay zone. Um, but I am seeing it more and more within city code. And I think Mary Ann can add to that.
Yeah, just to indicate that, um, and we were just looking at the parking, um, with the snowplow discussion that was going on um, previously with council. And we have in ordinances made exceptions for or different, um, and in the winter parking ordinance, a different timeframe, um, that's set for that kind of downtown zone as well. So that is a possibility in the ordinance if that's something that council is, is interested in doing.
Thank you. So in my mind, it would help me frame this conversation that we're about to have if I knew, which it sounds like it's possible, to have different hours for the heart of our city, the downtown on the north side. It's a different animal than the south side. And if, if going into this knowing that, I think we should keep that in, in our minds because I, I do think it frames the conversation maybe a little different. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and I'm not sure exactly who they're for. So, um, if anybody has answers to them, just please hop up. One of the things that, that came to mind in conversations that I've been having on this and in reading through the information that was provided is just the, the lingering question of what the on, or the original envisionment of the CC zoning was. I know in, um, what we got from, um, Dan Folk, there was just some discussion of some of the kind of arbitrary language in there, uh, about the blending of residential and commercial. And what some of that language meant, but I, I'd like a better understanding of what was originally kind of envisioned by the creation of that zone.
So it's hard to say what the original, it, it dates far back. Um, and it, community commercial existed in our nineteen seventies zoning, zoning code. Um, and the boundaries of that district didn't change too, too much from, from now to then. But what has changed fundamentally is our zoning code overall. So our zoning code from the seventies is actually very small and quaint. Um, when we adopted new, um, zoning standards in nineteen ninety, we went to a very broad breadth, um, zoning code. When we did that, we added a lot of different zoning districts overall. So we had a ton. I don't have the exact number. I wish I had the exact number of zoning districts we had. But then in 2013, when we, um, came back and worked on our zoning code again, we actually ended up collapsing a lot of zoning districts. And so we took a lot of existing zoning districts and clapped them and it collapsed them into much fewer, which does very much simplify the code. But in a lot of ways now, there's not a lot of difference between the community commercial zone and the highway commercial zone. Um, even in terms of their development standards, there are really only a handful of uses that differentiate the two. Hotels would be one of them. We allow hotels, we call it lodging, or sorry, we call it tourist accommodations now. But that's one of those land uses. There are some slight, um, manufacturing or processing that we also allow in the highway commercial that we don't allow in the community commercial. But again, it is just but that handful of separation of uses. So there really isn't a lot of differential between these zones, so many of these zones anymore. One, just because of what was much smaller, became really broad and then got condensed. And it just added a lot to that zone in terms of also dealing with Prop 207, making sure we left rights intact. Um, and for those reasons, those zoning districts have not, they, they don't have quite the differential that they once had. If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. I guess my next question, just based off of, again, the conversations that I've been having on this, uh, is in terms of some of the, I, I know that the, um, that the CC zone was, um, very much visioned as a live-work, um, zone. And, um, just looking at the mapping of, of where it's centralized and located, the largest that I'm seeing is really in the south side, um, neighborhood. I, I had trouble accessing the map, so I don't know that that's true. Uh, but that's the, the biggest one that I saw when I was able to look at it. Thanks. Um, and so I'm, I'm wondering also about the, that historic vision of live-work compatibility between neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, and this type of zone, um, where you're blending those two things, right? But, uh, there, there does seem to be a hinting of language that, that speaks to almost the prioritization of residential use, um, at least in terms of, of ensuring that the compatibility is with, um, the lived environment. So I'm wondering, like, what the prioritization is now in the CC zone or, or in that vision of live-work compatibility?
Sure. Thank you so much. So the CC zone is found pretty much in three areas. It is found in north of the downtown area. Um, so this surrounds, as you get out of that central business district, you do have, um, community commercial. It is found extensively in the sunny side neighborhood, as well as south side. It is interesting to note, uh, one commercial shopping center, I believe it is former Hastings, now Sprouts, is, is also weirdly in the community commercial zone. Um, but that's, that's the core of what I know of where that's located. In terms of prioritization, the zoning code doesn't work in a way where we are prioritizing one use over another. If we were back to doing that, we would have clear, we would have clear differential between zones. Because that's why zoning was initially adopted. It was more about the separation of land uses. Where zoning codes have now evolved over time. And we are seeing, uh, more blending. And it's more common to have residential development in commercial zones. What I'll tell you about the community commercial zone is, is that the predominant land use in that zone is probably residential. But they were properties that had been zoned commercially because there had been hopes that more people would be able, and I've seen this in older subdivisions, in older cities where we have a, a lot more, we have a bigger supply of commercial zoning than we would ever use for commercial development. And maybe the intent and hope had been that people would have that live-work. But even most of these lots don't meet the minimum design parameters of the community commercial zone. For example, the minimum lot size in the community commercial zone is nine thousand square feet. I would tell you that the vast majority of lots do not even meet that standard. And so when you have sub-standards, and that's a nice word, when you have substandard lots, it actually makes it harder to develop them commercially, leaves them much more likely to be developed residentially. And in fact, when we made changes to the community commercial zone, when we adopted the code in 2011, we had unintentionally made a lot of single-family homes that already existed legal non-conforming uses. We did come back in and we amended the code to make sure that those single-family homes and duplexes that already existed in those zones did not become legal non-conforming. The reason is, is because when you become legal non-conforming, we start to limit the amount of improvements that can happen on those properties. That's one way to start deteriorating housing stock is by only allowing small or minor improvements or changes to those homes. So we've gone in over time and sort of reevaluated and we've definitely, one, just understanding what it is we already have in this zone, um, which for a large part is, is, is residential. What you see north of downtown is you do see a lot of this older housing stock that's been converted to commercial. We just haven't seen that as much in the south side. And we haven't seen that as much in sunny side. Um, but there are, there are the instances where they are. I hope that helps. I know I'm rambling a little bit. Sorry.
Okay, I rambled with the question too, so it's, you're totally fine. Um, Mayor, I'm going to leave it there for now and I, I'll maybe have some more questions, but I want to leave space for others. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, so I was reading through all the information that was given to us in our, in, in our packet. And I was trying to figure out, are we talking about a zoning code issue? Or are we talking about a behavior?
Well, I was asked to, we were asked to basically respond to the issue of noise abatement in terms of zoning code districts. And if there's a way to utilize zoning code districts to apply noise standards, even if it's outside of the zoning code. Um, and so that CCR is meant to, one, just a couple of things. There were a couple of things that were discussed in the public and that is, why aren't we just enforcing the zoning code? But we currently don't have noise provisions in the zoning code. Um, so we don't set that bar. There are some, there's general language about compatibility. For the most part, the zoning code focuses that compatibility on architectural standards, not always. But for the most part, they tend to focus more on architectural, um, building, massing, scale, rather than those other details like noise provisions. So I, just trying to provide as much amount of information so that you all can make the best decision you can and in regards to this ordinance was our hope.
So my understanding though is that zoning codes really do focus on land use. Is that correct? Or am I making it too simple?
No, you're not making it too simple at all. Um, zoning codes absolutely- Zoning codes absolutely focus on land use. But our goal is to try to build in compatibility where possible by developing standards that try to take the wide variety of uses and make them blend together. It's not a perfect science. And zoning codes also have a lot of different hurdles and parameters that they have to jump through, different standards that pretty much are applied to land use than they are just within, say, other provisions of city code.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it there for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Don't sit down. Just real quick, could you restate, so I have a clear understanding, the difference between community commercial and highway commercial?
Sure. So community commercial has actually very little differential in terms of development standards between highway commercial. If you think about it and you look at the building form, right? Setbacks are really similar. Building height is similar, it's 60 feet in both zones. The list of permitted and conditional uses is very close to one another. There's a differential of about five or six uses in there. Hotels is the one that I picked out specifically to call out, for example. Some other are some light manufacturing that are allowed in that highway commercial zone. But overall, there's very little differential these days between those zoning categories. I did not necessarily go back and compare what they were in 1970, but that's something I can actually do. The one other point that I did want to bring out is that South Side is not only subject to the conventional zoning districts, it is also subject to the transect zones. The transect zones complicate calling out one particular zoning district over another. For example, if I was in the community commercial zone and maybe a noise ordinance standard was placed only on the community commercial zone, I still have that ability to go in and elect into the transect zone. So just something to caveat and watch, that's the thing about a zoning code, it's never simple, it's never easy. And there's usually some way to work through the ebb. I mean, our job is to work with our business owners, to work with our residents, and try to allow the development that they see as fit for their properties.
And lastly, if I understood what was told to me on a question that I had one other time we were speaking about this, if a, you know, as evolution, new businesses have came in, it falls kind of under the same umbrella, but now they have, you know, outdoor music and bands and da-da-da. You can't get out of that usage, and I'm going to use the word, and maybe it's the wrong word to use, but grandfathered that use unless that property was vacant for 12 months. Does that, am I making sense? That's how I understand it. So if it was a restaurant bar, and then a new restaurant bar or bar comes in, and they have different, how they're utilizing their entertainment for their people, they're really not in violation of any codes, so to speak, and they can't be forced. Because at one point, I researched and I saw some cities list very specifically, this is what you can have in this area. But we can't even do that unless, like, a business moved out and they stayed vacant for 12 months, and now we could say, moving forward, this is the type of businesses coming in. Is that correct?
Sure. And it's not even necessarily 12 months. It depends, the situation of when, so the term we use is non-conforming. And you're either legal non-conforming, or you're not. Legal non-conforming means you were in existence, you were in compliance with all of the codes prior to the adoption of a new ordinance. That's why the zoning code is a little bit more tricky, because those non-conforming provisions are a huge part of the zoning code. So if, for some reason, the zoning code changes, then you would become legal non-conforming. So if noise provisions, for example, were added into the zoning code, then it could, we could create a whole vast array of businesses potentially that could become legal non-conforming or until such time as that use terminates. And it's very rare that uses terminate, I guess, per se. So, you know, we, as planners, you know, we don't, we look at land use pretty much once, which is when you're coming in and getting your initial approval. But a site that's already been approved as a restaurant, it could change hands 10 times, and we would never see it.
And we would not get involved, because they're just doing their own private business.
Correct.
That's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question, since it sort of came up in the last conversation. Prop 207 claims. I'm just curious if you could talk about that for me. I don't want to ask a question in such a way that makes Sterling pop up out of his hole. But if you could just generally discuss the potential risk of that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So, I mean, Prop 207 is the, I had it up here early. It's the Private Property Rights Protection Act, also known as Prop 207, which we like to call casually. But essentially, we are not able through, specifically, but it's not only zoning code provisions, to change a code or requirement that may diminish the value of someone's property. So there are not a lot of parameters that go along with Prop 207.
It's highly interpretable
Yes.
by whatever litigant might be making those pronouncements.
Yes, exactly. And so it is very sort of subjective in that stance. And you are often all put in a position to sometimes decide whether it is in the best interest of the city to waive any potential claim against the city, or whether or not you want to pursue or fight those ordinances. So when I say the zoning code is a different animal, it is just simply because it has a lot more oversight and it has a lot more eyes on it in terms of what you can and can't do. The other thing about the zoning code is, is that there is a requirement for uniformity across that code, and across the way we enforce provisions within a zoning district. So there's just things that go, that coincide with the way a zoning code operates that may not apply to other ordinances that you'd find in city code.
Mayor, if I may, popping up out of my hole here, Tiffany nailed it. It was absolutely perfect, what she said. It is highly subjective when it comes to interpretation of Prop 207. That said, most claims do surround zoning code provisions by far. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Tiffany, you just mentioned something about adding, don't step away, adding noise issues to the zoning code. I don't think anybody here is suggesting that. Then I'll point out, though, that there are things in our zoning code that regulate things that aren't really, you know, building shapes, setbacks, and all that geometry-type stuff. For instance, livestock keeping is regulated as a function of what zone you're in, just as an example. And, you know, if we don't want to do this by referencing the zoning, then maybe we should do it by words like residential and commercial. And I'll note that I looked at the Scottsdale Code, and they have very different noise regulations for different areas of the town. I don't know if they do it by zoning, or if they just, in the noise ordinance, call out specific areas. That might be the way they do it, I'm not sure. But it can be done as a function of, you know, different rules for different areas. So I guess, rather than have staff argue with us about what they can't do, I would like it if staff would tell us what they can do and what the most practical way to accomplish what we need to do, which is allow people to sleep in their own house. Okay, thank you.
And let's hold on that until we take public comment. So next up, we have Craig Bouchard.
Hello again, council. I had some prepared comments, but I'm going to amend those a little bit. First and foremost, I was going to ask you to help me get the report from Flag PD on noise complaints over the past several months, so we actually have data. While we were here at this meeting, I got a call from Flag PD, I let it go to voicemail. The number of noise complaints you've had in the city over the last six months? 14. 14. So here we are, spending a ton of time, I've spent a ton of money, city's spent a ton of money, 14. And I can tell you, you do not have a citywide problem. Last time we did this, we looked through, and of the noise complaints, we had people playing music on sidewalks, we had car washes. This boils down to simply a dispute between my property, my tenant, and a neighbor. So just as we had just been talking about Prop 207, you're going to diminish my value. It's a taking, right? I've been scoffed at before, and I've used those words, but that's effectively what it is. You're taking something from me. My neighbors have a right to sue me for their taking. Let's be done with this. This is a dispute between one neighbor, I mean me, and a few neighbors around us. I am encouraging them to sue us. They should sue me, sue the prior owner, sue all the tenants that have been along, and let's get our day in court. Let's not debate this for the entire city. 14 over the past several months noise complaints. $100,000 at least has been spent by the city on noise studies, staff time, one property, and a few neighbors. Granted, it is something to be tackled, but this deserves to go to court. This doesn't deserve to be tried at city council for the entire city to actually be subject to something. And you heard her talk about Sprouts as in a community commercial district. You're going to try to attract a new tenant there, a Trader Joe's, or whatever the case may be. These kinds of things can cost you, right? Ultimately. Look at the tax revenue, your TPT revenues, your TPT revenues are flat to down. We have inflation, so your revenue should be up. Governments always win, right? They get taxed on the end product. The city is experiencing a little bit of a downturn, which was what Ms. Mathis's article kind of talked about a little bit today. So do we want to keep putting the city through this consternation for this one conflict? There is an answer, there is a way out. You guys should stop doing this to the entire city, and let us handle this as a private dispute.
Thank you. Next up, we have Candace Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. On October 26, we had to call into Flag PD as we were unable to sleep due to the patio noise, as well as the base coming from the inside of the bar. The call was made at 12:00 a.m. after dealing with it for well over an hour. We got ourselves pulled together, dogs outside, and ready for a visit from an officer. However, an officer never came to the house, nor did we receive a call from one of them about the situation as we usually do. We waited until 1:30 a.m., knowing on Saturday night they're very busy. At 1:30, we threw in the towel and tried to go back to sleep, which was challenging. This is an example of the different outcomes that I concur with this situation, that completely falls on those being burdened and disturbed, being disturbed, I'm sorry, not to mention the burden it puts on Flag PD. Before purchasing our home, we walked the alley numerous times at night. We were also aware of the zoning code. Never in a million years did we think that this could happen in CC zoning. It is now being said it's non-binding, nowhere is that stated. And if people can't count on what's on the books, then what's the point? The sound study the city paid for reflected decibel levels based on zoning and varying levels based on times of day, meaning there would be a noise ordinance in effect 24/7, which is fairly standard in other cities. What we're asking for is a huge compromise by not having it 24/7. And the city is saying, if we're not doing it 24/7, that's a free-for-all before the noise ordinance is in effect. Families in the area have come together, these are the maximum compromises we can live with. Quiet hours, starting Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 p.m. Fines, the fines are low and manageable for most businesses. We're asking that if there are three violations within 180 days, not 120 days, it would result in a business license being suspended on the fourth violation. However, we have a fallback position that the fourth violation being a fine of $5,000. So warning first, second violation, $500, third, $1,000, fourth, business license being suspended. If a business is violated three times, it's clearly a larger issue that needs to be addressed. The idea to suspend a business license on the fourth violation came up in the last Noise Ordinance Committee I was on, as businesses budget for fines. We're also asking for clear language, saying the officer will evaluate the noise disturbance from the property line instead of the inside of the house. Please remember the noise ordinance is complaint-based, and if you haven't been getting complaints, you will be fined. The current business model the tavern runs under is not and cannot coexist with neighbors. Studies have shown too much noise can harm your health and shorten your life. I can tell you it has to my family. My family has suffered from a lot of stress from this, including my neighbors who have moved. It's been a living hell, to be honest. I refer back to the city's mission to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. It's not to protect and enhance the quality of life for everyone but the South Side. It's evident that the South Side is being expected to tolerate things other neighborhoods in the exact same zoning are not. Please do not repeat history, and please do what is right and not what is popular. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Candace? Councilmember McCarthy has a question for you.
So I want to address this issue of the intent language. From what you told me, and I just want to share it with the council, before you moved and bought the house that you live in now, you did your homework. You walked down there and you listened on the weekends to the bar noise, and it was not an issue at all.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you checked the zoning code, and you saw that it says that commercials shall be compatible with residential. And so is that what you did?
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you have any reason to believe that this, the wording in the city ordinance was not binding? Or did you think, I mean, it was written in the code, did you believe that it meant what it said?
I assumed what I'm reading is what is, and that's all I can go off of.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to continue with public comment. We have a couple of online commenters.
Mayor, our first commenter is going to be Blake Whitten. Blake, you may go ahead and address mayor and council.
Thank you. In her remarks, Candace described the consensus positions from three families in our South Side neighborhood, my family, Candace's family, and Dawn Tucker's family. I believe Dawn is going to speak tonight as well. I ask councilmembers to please listen to us. Our positions represent a maximum compromise and the minimum noise relief that we believe that we can live with. We want to find a workable solution. As I believe council knows, I lost my last tenant in my home in December of last year to noise issues and have been unable to rent my home for all of 2024. So through November, that's 11 months, and I'm losing money at a rate of $25,000 per year. I also am unable to move back to my home during retirement, as I hope to, since I have children. Not being able to sleep at night poses a health hazard for them. So the noise issues have removed moving back to my home in future years as a practical option. If our family's requested minimal noise relief isn't passed by this year's council by the end of this year, because this has been going on for years already, I worry that families may lose hope in building a city consensus and instead consider taking legal action against the city. In short, please provide minimum noise protection in the year 2024 to avoid a possible lawsuit in the year 2025. Please allow me to just reiterate what Candace said are our requests. First of all, first and foremost, on the enforcement hours, our families have discussed and considered the current wording of the current version of 10:00 p.m. on weeknights and 12:00 midnight on weekends, especially since calls to police often add an additional hour to the enforcement process. We want to be completely honest to say that these hours will not preserve the physical and mental health of South Side residents. We consider them to be unworkable. So instead, that's why we have suggested enforcement hours of 8:00 p.m. on the weeknights and 10:00 p.m. on the weekends, as Candace mentioned. These times represent our family's maximum compromise. Those with children especially understand that these times represent a huge concession. compared to the 24/7 residential enjoyment in other neighborhoods. Secondly, we do advocate a four-strike suspension of business license, meaning that if a business is issued four citations in a specified period of time, that indicates that the business is indeed a major public nuisance and should lose its license. But as Candace also mentioned, if that's considered too harsh by a majority of council members, then we request that the maximum fine be increased from $1,000 in the party ordinance to $5,000 because businesses have deeper pockets. And finally, we recommend that the time window for citation escalating fines be increased from 120 days in the current language to 180 days because we believe that a six-month enforcement-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Your time is up. Another online commenter?
Yes, our second commenter is going to be Dawn Tucker. Dawn, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Mayor and Council, I urge you to consider a noise ordinance that is specific and nuanced for the neighborhoods of Flagstaff. One that truly embraces the spirit of our community and the balance it needs to thrive. A noise ordinance in neighborhoods where businesses and residences coexist can significantly enhance the quality of life for both residents and businesses. By regulating excessive noise, we promote a peaceful environment, reducing disturbances, and improving the overall- and boost commerce. But it goes beyond that. It supports public health and well-being, as research has shown that exposure to excessive noise can lead to stress, sleep disturbances, and even long-term health issues. Cities with effective noise ordinances often report a noticeable reduction in noise complaints, reducing police workload and business interruptions. Additionally, such noise ordinances can maintain delicate balance between the vibrancy of commercial activity and the needs of nearby residences. In Flagstaff, we value our close neighborhoods. It's essential that we protect their character while allowing businesses to grow. I'd like to talk about a specific, successful example. At 11 South Beaver Street, home to some of Flagstaff's most lavid businesses, Biff's Bagels, Beaver Street Brewery, Burley Fish Hut, and Founder Yoga, the landlords enforce very strict rules around noise for their commercial tenants. The top half of the building is an apartment complex, and these noise rules, which essentially function as an internal noise ordinance, make the entire complex work in harmony. The businesses, including a bar with an outdoor patio, are thriving, while the residential tenants enjoy peaceful living spaces. This balance achieved through noise regulations benefits everyone involved. With similar ordinances in place across our community commercial neighborhoods, we could expect the same harmony. It's important to recognize that clear, thoughtful rules help attract the right businesses to the right locations while safeguarding the health and well-being of residences who often have less power to change their environment. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. I ask that you consider the specific suggestions put forward by the residents who have been working tirelessly on this for years, like Candace Ryan Schmidt and Blake Whitten. I will add that quiet hours can be by neighborhood. Being nuanced and deliberate is imperative and appropriate. This is not an isolated dispute. We have countless friends in the South Side who have suffered. It is not a private or isolated dispute. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dawn. We have another public commenter?
Yes, Mayor, our last commenter is going to be Shawna Gottlieb. Shawna, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Mayor and Council? Mayor and Council? Mayor and Council? Mayor and Council?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time, Candace. Yes, so firstly, I, you know, I'm speaking as family, and I'd just like to second everything that has been said before me as well by the other commenters. I want to say a couple of things. First, I want to address, one of the things that has been discussed on this front is the impact it have on live music. I've been in this community for 12 years. I've been a performing musician all of those years. I've played in every single venue that this town has to offer, and it's my opinion, my professional opinion, as an active musician, that a common sense noise ordinance that protects residents will have little to no impact on live music, its vitality for musicians, or for venues. If you'd like me to elaborate on how I've arrived at that opinion and that estimation, I'm happy to answer your questions after this fact. But I also want to talk a little bit, just more in depth, about, you know, what this, what noise ordinance would impact us as residents. So my wife and I, you know, we lovingly restored one of Flagstaff's most historic homes in the South Side. It was set to be razed, and had we not taken it on and restored it, it probably would have been. We lived there happily for years until specifically the mayor bar moved in a block away. This particular business subjected us to unregulated incessant amplified music from the rooftop morning, day, and night throughout the year. Despite repeated calls to the police department, complaints, and evaded attempts to connect with the mayor's management, nothing was done. Around July 21, our infant son was sick with COVID, being repeatedly woken up by objects falling off the shelves because our walls were shaking from the over-amplified music, and we decided it was no longer tenable for us to live there. And now, we were privileged enough that we were able to figure out a way to move out while still holding our house in the South Side with hopes that we'd be able to move back in. It took every bit of financial stretching we had capable to make it happen, but at the time, council was deep in discussions about a noise ordinance, had hired a consultant to research and draft a noise ordinance, and we estimated that an ordinance would soon be adopted and we'd be able to move back home. But now we're two years later, and no real effective common sense noise ordinance has been adopted. And we can't stretch anymore. We want to move back to our South Side community. So I really beseech the council, you know, take action. Listen to the recommendations from your residents who have been living here. Listen to the recommendations of your staff. Listen to the recommendations of the professional consultant that you hired to research and propose an ordinance, and really take some, you know, do something on this front. I know due diligence is important, but this has been a discussion for five years. Due diligence has been done, and it's your responsibility as elected officials to make the hard decisions, protect the powers, protect the powerless, and legislate. So please, please adopt a common sense noise ordinance for your residents. And like I said, if you'd like to hear more-
Thank you, Shawna. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some comments about the general ordinance, but I want to first, right now, make some comments about what some of the things I just heard. A certain person would have us think that this is, no one's complaining about it except the two people that live right in back of the bar. Well, that's not really true. I know of five families, and we might have just heard a sixth, that have actually moved because of the noise. That's a pretty severe thing that someone has to do, that they actually have to move and in some cases, sell their house because of the noise ordinance. We've gotten numerous emails. Since I've been on council, I have literally, no exaggeration, gotten dozens of emails, and some of those were received before some of you people were on council. Because we've been working on this, as the last gentleman said, for five years. We've had community meetings with the police department and in conversations. A lot of people came to those meetings and made a case that something needs to be done about this. You know, it's been implied that Candace is, you know, one of the two people complaining about this only. I'd point out that Candace was appointed by the city manager to be on a special committee, and her job was to listen to her neighbors and coordinate and represent ideas that they had and bring them forward. And the complaints have fallen off. There's no doubt about that. So why is that? People are tired of complaining over five years and hearing no results, no action by this council. The other thing is, why would someone be hesitant to call the police? Under the existing rules, the police, at least in their opinion, have to come inside the home, and usually this is at night, when the children are trying to sleep, when the dogs are trying to sleep and don't want to be disturbed. People do not want policemen inside their home late at night. And the other thing is, why don't people complain as much as they used to? Is there waiting for council action on this? They've been told that we hired a consultant. They've been told that a study committee is active and is actively working on this, and it's like, why complain? The city's already working on it. That's why the complaints have dropped off. So I have comments about a possible ordinance, but I just wanted to, at this point, address some of the other things that I had heard tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, hearing the strong recommendation from the residents for an 8:00 PM quiet time and 10:00 PM goes back to kind of prove my point that I said maybe the last time or two times ago when we talked about this, that there really isn't a living in that area. There is not going to be any time that's going to satisfy the residents. I counted just really quick, trying to get my zoom in. We have 25 bars and food establishments in the South Side. Yes, they have, you know, I liked hearing that the landlords have enforced their own personal restrictions, but to hear that the solution is 8:00 PM on weekdays and 10:00 PM on the weekends is, that's not even something that could be considered, I think, having a business down there. I know that Candace said she walked the area when they bought the house, but what, again, when we were talking, and I asked Tiffany, you know, there's one bar, one business that's there today. Businesses turn over all the time and to assume that the type of businesses and the mannerisms that they're acting today are going to be the same five years from now is not really realistic, because if it's a bar and a restaurant, it's going to change over time, and we can hope that, oh, it's this way now. All that to say that I was really happy to hear the noise ordinance go to midnight on weekdays, I believe it was, and 1:00. Seems reasonable for a restaurant and a bar to still be able to make a living. Councilmember Sweet said something about the downtown area, but we're focusing on building, you know, density downtown. So we're going to have the same issue. If we were to separate the downtown, we'd be back doing this again, because we don't get the complaints in the downtown area because the homes, the residences are a block away. But once we start building density down there, this is going to be a bigger problem. And so I hope that, and I want us to resolve this today, now, so people know ahead of time when they move in, that this is what they're going to have to face, and businesses can change ownerships and maybe dynamics, but still be a bar and a restaurant, and so the noise level can change. I don't know that we can come to something that's going to make everybody happy unless it went to court. I think Craig's suggestion might be a really good suggestion and let the courts decide. I'm not a judge to start asking residents and the business owners, well, did you do this and did you do that? Almost like we're an acting judge. We're really kind of stepping out of our lane. So I am disturbed with, I've had a conversation with Councilmember Harris about how did this happen down in South Side? And so we're faced with that too, but in looking at the bigger picture, I hope tonight we can conclude this, and I hope tonight we can come up with something that's realistic and desirable for both the residents and the businesses, so they can all live together. I think there is, whether it's two complaints or 10 people, definitely it's, we're talking about changing the rules and the laws for one business. That it seems to be a problem for the residents. And so I'm hesitant to make any blanket global changes too significantly for the unintended consequences that we may cause. So I thought we were going down a good path, but hearing their suggestion of 8:00 PM and 10:00 PM is unrealistic in my eyes for a business, and that would definitely be a violation, guessing. I'm not a lawyer. Prop 207, because those hours are maybe for a sit-down restaurant with no bar attached to it. So that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I think is a really important question that I want to focus us back on is one that was just raised by Councilmember Matthews, and it's that question of how did this happen in the South Side? One of the things that I've been looking at through this conversation and in researching and looking at what was presented to us by staff about the community commercial zone is, I think, a very important part of the conversation that we haven't fully touched on, and it's that community commercial zoning is typically a zone that allows for commercial businesses to be located near residential neighborhoods to provide convenient shopping and services for the community. The core intention, as far as I can see, of community commercial zones is retail shopping and convenient services for communities. And so with that in mind, I'm wondering why part of our conversation is not also looking at the other neighborhoods and areas where this zoning exists and questioning more, again, how did this happen specifically in the South Side? Looking at the history of this location, it used to be a bike shop. It used to be a cafe. It used to be these other, again, convenient shopping and services for the community uses. Now it's a bar, and I don't necessarily see how that fits into the definition of this type of zoning for this neighborhood. So that's the question that I keep coming back to, is how did we step so far away from the traditional definition and interpretation of community commercial zoning? And how did this happen in the South Side? So that does not answer the questions of the full scope of this conversation tonight, but I think we would be very remiss not to have that as part of our central considerations in this conversation, is centering that. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
I'm appreciative of this conversation. So I do, I hear you, Councilmember Matthews, but I still think I would like to look at breaking out the historical Central Business District on the north side of the tracks. And I do understand we have housing coming, but that housing will be in an area that is expected to have noise, hustle and bustle. That's what, when you live in a city, that is what you are getting. And something, as I was thinking, you know, new construction, it's not old historic homes, new construction, I think the loudness of the downtown will be abated to a point. And to go down the list, I am willing to look at the hours in the South Side. I do want to remind us that obviously there's going to be a lot of discussion around that, and we are going to need to compromise, so I look forward to that. And I think it's reasonable to have the police respond outside of the residence. I don't see a problem with that. And one thing I was also reading and thinking, it would be nice to have a proactive approach with the current businesses and the incoming businesses when they do say, well, I want to take this spot, that they know for sure what they're getting into with what we decide tonight. So those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. This has definitely been a pretty- This has definitely been a pretty heavy and interesting conversation. I wonder if we would be having this conversation if we were talking about a Ponderosa Trails, for example, or a University Heights, or any other place other than South Side. As far as, we've been doing this for over five years. When I came on, or when I was the executive director slash board president for South Side, we had a meeting and a lot of the same people were at that meeting. And I can tell you for a fact that it did get to be hostile. And I can see why people would not want to complain. In fact, it was so hostile to the point that one of my male board members had to ask the person to step back. Okay? So in terms of people wanting to complain or willing to complain, I understand why they would be concerned about complaining because people do have fears and they're real. And from there, I'll go on to, this is a health and safety issue, and I have not heard enough conversation about that. All the data will show you that if you are sleep deprived, it does hurt your health. If we need to bring in other people, medical professionals, to talk about that, then maybe that's what we need to do. Because I can tell you that if a child is trying to sleep and they have to get up and go to school the next day and their sleep has been disturbed, do you think that child is going to function to the best of their ability in that situation? No. Do we need to be concerned about people's health and safety and children? Absolutely. And anybody that says that that should not come into play, I beg to differ. I also think that we are talking about a behavior of one business. The other businesses in South Side, from what I understand, have not had these complaints. Beaver Street Brewery definitely has a patio outside. They definitely have music and all of that. And they don't get these kind of complaints. And there are other outside patios in the South Side. And I'm in that community every day and sometimes into the night. So I know what I'm talking about in terms of this being an issue for this community, that they are being affected by this and they're tired of us not making a decision because we're afraid to take a stand. As for the hours, absolutely 8:00. You know, if it were my kid, my kid is in the bed at 7:00 or 8:00. And so it does matter. And I think that we have to be okay with telling people no because no is the right answer sometimes. So this business needs to be told no. And we're not legislating for one person. We are legislating for this whole community, this entire community. And I can tell you that this is not going to be the last time this comes up. We have a housing emergency and people are, and we have people moving, using their meager resources to now live somewhere else when they have a home that they don't have to rent, I mean, that they don't have to, that they should not have to leave. And so, you know, I could go on and on and on and I don't want to keep taking up everybody's time, but I think that this is about being courageous and this is about stepping out there. And people tell us all the time, we're going to sue the city. You're taking away my property rights. I don't understand how asking people to respect people's ability to sleep and function is taking away their rights. Somebody's going to have to prove that to me. And so that's it for me. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, everybody. I know this is a very difficult conversation for some. No one who is close to a problem can afford to philosophize about it. And I just want to acknowledge that for the residents that are specifically coming forward and talking about this, this is a big deal and we have a responsibility to you and at the very least, to make sure that you feel heard and that you feel respected through the process. I guess I do have a couple of things to say. You know, we've been talking about this for a long time and I'm, for many months, most recently. And we've dedicated several long hours of council meetings recently to drafting up this noise ordinance. I have it here in front of me. It's 16 pages long. And this is something that was difficult for us to get to most recently and even over a longer period of time, which some folks have referenced. I believe that this document with maybe a few more little tweaks that we can come up with is sufficient to the problem that we're facing. There's a lot in here about noise and what people can do about it. It's very thorough. And so my position hasn't really changed from the previous conversations we've had insofar as the recommendations that we've come up with have been incorporated into this document. A couple of things I want to just point out which is problematic to me. The noise regulations around hours specifically states that the following, this is section B, it's on page two of this document. The following noise restrictions are hereby established for any area within the city. I find that incredibly problematic. This is very restrictive and very specific to a couple set of circumstances and it will be applied throughout the entire city of Flagstaff. You know, I wrote some of these notes before we heard from public comment and I do think we're dancing around the fact that we've largely been drawn into arbitrating a private dispute. There's just no data to substantiate the claim that noise issues pervade the entire city of Flagstaff. There just isn't. And to the extent that there has been, we have addressed those concerns when it comes to loud cars, when it comes to train noise, when it comes to special events and festivals, we have addressed those concerns for the whole city. I remain very concerned that we're at the cusp of applying a wrecking ball to a rusty nail here. It's very problematic to me. The idea that we can be specific and nuanced is not just problematic to me on that level. I also think it's untenable. I think it's unworkable. I don't think that this is enforceable. I just don't. I think it's going to become a nightmare for those who are asked to make sure of compliance. And I feel that we are giving a weapon to a small group of people to wield very widely a set of circumstances that are just really more specific than that. You know, the intent for the zoning is for compatibility and I strongly feel that this 16-page document, that the seven of us have worked out over several months and even a longer period of time, is sufficient to the task. I also remain very concerned about Prop 2007 claims. I'm certain we will get Prop 2007 claims dropped on us if we do anything that's more restrictive than what we already have here, which is far more restrictive than what we did have. And so I think we've hit the solution here. There's a couple little problems. You know, I remember, I was willing to drop the hours a little bit specifically for the zone we were talking about. I thought it was reasonable that we would ask a bar to be quiet by 10:00 p.m. on a weeknight and by midnight on a Friday or Saturday. The way it's written here is different. The hours are later, but there's also no way to parse where this is being applied. And so I think it has to stay the way it is. And I think that, you know, any further disputes need to be litigated privately. I just really feel like we're weighing over our heads here. And again, I'll use the image of a wrecking ball fixing a rusty nail. I just think that's where we're at if we take any other further actions here. We are trying to grow our downtown in vibrancy and that's the entire downtown region. Density's going to go up. We're potentially restricting those very objectives and visions by being too restrictive with this document. I think the document needs to be broad and it needs to apply everywhere and then it can be parsed legally in specific instances. So I'm pretty happy with the way this document looks now. I'm interested in any other small tweaks. We have option A, we have option B under civil penalties. I'm probably amenable to either one of these. I think the options that are being provided by the public commenters is far too, far too much of a blunt instrument to be wielded against specific perpetrators. And I worry that when you start thinking about applying this broadly through the whole city, you're going to create other problems and there are going to be other casualties. And this is in an environment where our business community and our restaurants and bars are already under a great deal of stress, as has been noted.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of comments that are just clarifications on like what the word persuasive means, what the word sustained means. And I don't, I don't want to get into that now. I think we're having like a higher level conversation. So I'll make some higher level comments right now. And specifically, I think I want to address what's reasonable. I heard the word reasonable a couple of times here. There's this myth that if we have this ordinance, that we're going to put bars out of business. That's absolute baloney. I was single for 11 years between marriages and I went dancing like three nights a week. And I have gone to bars in Tempe, in Scottsdale. I've gone to the Museum Club here in town. I've gone to the Orpheum for many, many concerts. None of those events were causing any problem for anybody. They were indoors and they weren't bothering anyone. So it's so easy for a bar to be successful without bothering the neighbors. I want to talk about the current proposal of midnight and 1:00. That's just a really cute way of saying, we'll have a noise ordinance, but it doesn't apply when the bars are open. Admittedly, they're open a little past midnight, but in effect, it says, we won't have any restrictions on noise until about the time that the bars are going to close. So I support this, the proposal of 8:00 during the week because that's when kids go to sleep. And I don't really support the 10:00 on Friday and Saturday, but I'm willing, for the sake of compromise, to go along with that, although I really philosophically think it's wrong. This really should be 24/7. But I'm willing to compromise onto 8:00 and 10:00. I want to talk about this, the idea of freedom. In America, the word freedom is very important to us, but it's an incomplete thought. There's freedom to and freedom from. So certain people think that they should have the freedom to take other people's freedom to have peace and quiet. And then some people think that they should have freedom from annoyance from somebody else. My philosophy is you should be able to do anything you want until it starts taking away someone else's rights. And when somebody has so much noise that their children cannot sleep, that's taking away the freedom from the other people. I do like the comments about that Ms. Sweet made about differentiating to downtown. I mean, the people that moved into the South Side believed that they were moving into a reasonable, quiet, livable community. And then that community changed. So we need to do something about it. As far as downtown, yes, there may be residential in the future, but people will realize that we have different rules down there. If they, as certain people in the audience here, they went and looked at the zoning code, well, people with any sense will look at the zoning code before they move into a different location. Mr. Aslan said, hey, we can probably live with the draft ordinance the way it is. To a certain extent, I agree with that. With a couple of changes, and most of these changes, I will come to later, are really nitpicky. They're just little fine points. But assuming we can change the hours to 8:00 and 10:00 and put words in saying that the police don't have to come into a person's house, they can evaluate the noise outside the house, I'm supportive of this. And I think tonight we can give direction to staff and have this come back to us in the next week or two. So if there's, if there's support from council on a higher level to do this, then I'll get into the little nitpicky definitions and stuff because I don't think there'll be anything controversial about that. But let's do the high-level discussion first. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I fully agree with Vice Mayor. And I think that one thing that we, I think, have failed to do because we've been so micro-focused on this one bar, this one complaint, is reach out to other bar, restaurant owners on the South Side. I just did. I asked them how that would impact them if we changed and had a quiet ordinance, 8:00 and 10:00. He said it'd be devastating. I also looked up some of the local bar and restaurants on the South Side that they've been there since the 90s and early 2000s. So, you know, going back to saying, you know, I think we have to be really careful to be reasonable with our noise ordinances and everything else needs to be litigated outside of, we're not attorneys. When there's a specific issue, a specific business that's creating a problem, we shouldn't try to change the whole landscape because of one issue. You know, using the Museum Club and the Orpheum, they're not by, they don't have this close proximity to residential that our South Side does. And so I don't know that I would totally agree with that. I think I mentioned before, there was a time where I lived off La Rue, blocks from downtown, but at 2:00, 2:30, I knew that I was going to be disturbed and woken up from people walking home and going to live, or going to their houses, I'm assuming, up by Hospital Hill. And that was just something I understood because of the street I was on. And it was loud. I mean, it was like, oh, my gosh, these guys, they wake me up and I'm a pretty hard sleeper. So I just want, I want to, I'm going to be very cautious and I think that the ordinance, the changes that have been made look reasonable. I don't agree with an 8:00, 10:00. I, you know, just asking a business owner that owns just a few more businesses in the South Side saying it's devastating, I'm curious to ask other bar, restaurant owners down there, does it impact them? Because we're assuming it wouldn't, that they could be successful with those hours. And I'm being told by somebody who actually runs those businesses, oh, my gosh, absolutely it would be impactful. So I just want to caution us to not try to resolve this current issue that needs some resolution. And I'll say it once again, I don't think, I don't think 8 and 10 is going to satisfy the local residents that live down there. You know, no noise would be the preferable way. If I was living down there, I would want no noise, but that's not realistic. So I think that we should all be careful in how we think about this, draw a line, come up with something reasonable. And then if there's still a problematic business owner, that needs to go to a private litigation and let them work it out instead of trying to impact every business in that area. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. The thing in the current
The thing in the current ordinance that I am flexible on is the hours. I think that we need to land somewhere between the 8:00 and the, I think it's midnight now. So going back to, and I think this was kind of the bend of the conversation previously, was that 10:00 p.m. and midnight. I don't find that fully satisfying because I understand the impact to the residents, the families that live there. However, I think it's the closest that we can get to a reasonable compromise. I also, just in looking through the ordinance, I disagree with the hesitancy or concern with the establishment of this policy across any area within the city, primarily because of, well, two things. One is Item C, which has the list of activities that are exempted from prohibition stated in Section B. And the second is just the consideration of why we would be okay with noise violations or issues like this anywhere else in the community. I'm looking at it in that way, as a reverse examination, is I don't live in the South Side, I don't live in that neighborhood or in a CC neighborhood. I do live in a highway, is it highway commercial, I think, neighborhood in an apartment. And we have community quiet hours from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. every day of the week. That's reasonable there. Why is it not reasonable within the South Side or within any other neighborhood? Looking at the adjacency of hotels and businesses and other residential places, as was brought up by one of the public speakers, pointing to the area where there's the, basically the marriage of commercial and residential on Beaver Street with Beaver Street Brewery, Best Bagels, and the apartments that exist above there, having spent significant amount of time at some of the apartments in that area from friends that live there, this was not an issue. And so, again, with that consideration, with the work that was done, with the collaboration with the business owners, the commercial tenants, the residential residents, and that whole area, they were able to collaborate to make that workable. So again, my question is, why not here? Why not in the South Side? And why would that same expectation not be able to apply to the rest of our community? In terms of the penalties that are listed in the, or the civil penalties under D and Option A and B, I lean towards Option A. I think the fourth noise violation there has a bit more teeth to it, rather than a, I want to say the other has a $500 fee, there's the $1,000 fee, inclusive of any state or city fines, fees, assessments, or surcharges. And I think that's also an important consideration in this is the amount of teeth that's behind that sort of a policy. It applies right now to a residential community where if I held a party in my home and my neighbors were disturbed and it was the fourth time I was getting a citation for it, I would be paying $1,000. I don't think that that's an unjust policy to apply to businesses in that area as well because it has teeth and it has a measure of really having to consider that before you allow things to get to that point. So that's where I'm at on the ordinance as it's drafted right now. I think that we do need to move forward with it. I do think that we need to get this matter resolved for the sake of not only the residents in this particular community, but also for the sake of our full community and showing that we are taking this consideration with the weight that it is owed and with the consideration of our full community at heart as we consider these matters. That's it for me right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
I guess I'm just really a little concerned about us suggesting that this go to court because for me, it signifies that for those of us who have the resources, we can get issues resolved. For those of us who may not have the resources, we can't get issues resolved. We're at the mercy. And so that's why people are here, is because they don't want to be in court. They want us to make some decisions that will be beneficial to the whole entire community and not say, if you don't like it, take it to court. I don't think that's the right attitude for us to have.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. A couple more thoughts with the hours. I am agreeing with Councilmember House that the 10:00 p.m. and midnight does seem like a reasonable compromise. You know, our businesses are hurting. This is going to affect them either way and I think, no matter what, we do need to figure out a compromise on the hours. And to me, I'm just going to reiterate that I think extending the times in a historical central business district doesn't mean that I'm not wanting those businesses to be held accountable, but I think having extended hours, it's just, we're a city. This is the core of our city and we're making decisions that are going to affect the core of our city. So I just, I want to put that back on the table, that we take a look at that. The DBA, the Downtown Business Alliance, does have a delineated set of blocks that they're involved in and maybe that could be where we start, trying to figure out what that would look like. And, you know, down the road, when there are residents built, and that's going to be a while, we can always take another look at this, but they are new construction, different soundproofing, they're moving into a downtown of a city, knowing that it's going to be loud. So I just, I do want that to be a decision.
Mayor, if, sorry, if I could just clarify, you're not asking that that central business district be a regulation through zoning?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to, in fact, I haven't heard anybody in the last 30 minutes reference it through zoning. I think that's been very clear tonight. Thank you.
It's not through zoning. It's what Tiffany mentioned, that it would just be a difference in the hours. And I forget how she phrased it.
Right. Thank you.
City Manager.
What I was going to say was just stated. I think it's an extension of the hours that's being contemplated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sweet. Just so I'm better able to understand, so since the DBA doesn't reach down into the South Side, are you saying that apart from the DBA, the same model would be used on the South Side? In terms of the delineation of the space?
I guess the only reason I'm bringing the DBA up is that they have their taxing district. And I guess I'm just saying, maybe that's where we start on what consists of the core of the downtown. Maybe it's those streets. And I have Tiffany, I think she would know more than I would as to what those streets consist of. But I'm saying just as a boundary of what the historical downtown business district.
You're saying that hours could be limited to the district in downtown, rather than a blanket ordinance throughout the city?
Right. I guess I'm trying to piece apart the historic business district of downtown, which coincides with the markings of the DBA. And those would have the different hours, extended hours, different from what we're talking about on the South Side.
And if I could clarify, yeah, the hours would be the same in the ordinance. There would be an exception carved out for the downtown business district, the central business district.
Yes.
Thank you, Sterling. That's what I meant to say.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure of the right definition to that, but it almost seems like if we did that, we'd be giving special privileges to the historic downtown because Sunny Side's an historic extension of that, too. One other thing I just wanted to bring up is, when I'm looking at Section B, it's really, we're using words like any noise that's pervasive or causing unreasonable disturbance. That's subjective to interpretation, right? You know, the police is going to show up. It's like, well, like how did they determine? Is it that person determining what's too much? Maybe we need to have a decibel requirement or something because just saying that it deserves person, I believe that a noise ordinance throughout the city, I mean, it could be at noon and if it's too loud, you know, then it's a problem, but it's subject to interpretation. And I just feel like we're just opening up a can of worms by keeping that so vague. And again, I'm good with the 8:00 weekday or 10:00 weekday. Well, actually, I would be okay with an 8:00 or 9:00 during the week, but a midnight on Friday, Saturday. Because I think if we walked tomorrow down and asked every restaurant bar owner in South Side and in downtown, they would freak out if we told them we just passed that because we're dealing with one very narrow situation without hearing from the other ones how they do business, what they think the impact would be. And so I'm just really hesitant to make such a restrictive hour, like 8:00 and 10:00. I just can't see that working for any business that has night hours. You're basically telling them to shut their doors at 10:00 on a weekend. And, you know, that's, we are a college town, so it's hard. I mean, it's really hard. I don't want to sound insensitive to the residents down there because I get it. It's very disturbing. And we've had these businesses that have different ways of doing businesses, but they've been, a lot of them have been restaurants and bars for a few decades. So, you know, it goes back to individually litigating when there's an isolated incidence, but I'm really hesitant and I'm not supportive of doing a blanket. This is for the whole city. And, you know, if we're going to give special treatment to the downtown district, that's going to open up another can of worms. So I think we just need to be really careful.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure what the DBA boundaries are. I think that the DBA includes part of the South Side. So I think I'd be interested in knowing what those, where the lines are before we make any final decision on that.
Well, and we wouldn't be making the decision on the DBA. Councilmember Sweet was suggesting that the DBA would look at their own boundaries and they're defined, it's a taxing district that they have for downtown.
Well, I guess I'm saying I don't know what that is. I'm supportive of the idea of carving out the downtown area. And I guess we don't want to do it by zone, but we could define it by streets or whatever. A couple of comments. I just would note that one night, I went into the bar at the Manavista and it was outrageously loud in there. And I went across the street with my sound meter. I couldn't even hear the music from across the street. So I guess why I'm saying this is this myth that bars have to make noise, disturbs other people, is not true. The other thing I'll point out is a lot of people are saying, well, it's only that one business. And of course, we're talking about the South Side Tavern. I will say this, when the mayor was up on top of the roof a couple of years ago, they were way louder than the, what's it called, the down, South Side Tavern. The police told me that they got complaints from as far away as Cherry Hill from the mayor when it was up on top of the roof. So that's a long ways away and they were getting complaints. It kind of sounds like we're, well, I want to make one more point before I get to this point. The existing rule, if we do nothing, is audible. If it's clearly audible, it's a violation. So this new wording is actually to the advantage of the bar owners. Because audible, if I can hear it, that's a violation. It sounds like we have general support for this. Maybe we need to get into the details of what times the council agrees to and other things. As far as, I think Lori Matthews brought up, some of the definition of pervasive and sustained. I have some thoughts about those words to make them less ambiguous and more objective. And I don't know if I should get into that now or wait until we do finish the high level discussion. Mayor?
Well, let's wrap up on what people are thinking about the hours and where it's measured and some of the things that we've all been landing on, and then we can come back to that. So is that it? For you, Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, I can, I have some thoughts about where it's measured and words that could clarify that. But, and then without getting into these little nitpicky things, yeah, we'll just see what the general overview is. Thanks.
Councilmember Harris, then Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Sweet. Vice Mayor.
Well, I have a question. Maybe this is for Tiffany. What is the feasibility of, I imagine if we excluded the Downtown Business Alliance footprint, that would go in the exclusions under C. Just wondering about the feasibility of that and how that gets written down and also gaming it out a little bit. Well, go ahead and answer the crux of the question there and then I'll game out some scenarios.
It could be written similar to what's in the winter parking ordinance as an exception, too. The language there is, the winter parking is from midnight to 7:00 a.m., except in this area and it delineates it by the streets.
So it sounds workable.
Yes. In that area, it's a different time.
Well, I want to give kudos to Councilmember Sweet for making that suggestion. I think it's interesting. I am concerned that it's going to create, you know, like a what-aboutism phenomenon. We're having this conversation in here and there's only a couple of people who are paying attention. When the downtown, when people who live near downtown hear that the Downtown Business Alliance is exempted from the noise ordinance, they're going to flip out. What about the business that's right across the street from the downtown footprint? I just, I see these distinctions as creating a whole nother snowball effect where we're not going to be able to leave this thing alone on and on into perpetuity. But that's what I'm struggling with. I think it might work for now, maybe with the sunset, just to alleviate the concerns that I'm perceiving, which may or may not be reality. In terms of the noise, you know, I was the first one to say, I think what's actually in here is more restrictive than, I mean, more permissive than what I was thinking. I like Councilmember Matthews' compromise idea of 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and kind of leaving alone on the weekends. I'd be okay with midnight. I think that makes sense. I think that feels... I think that feels reasonable, especially if we give out a carve-out, if we allow for this exception. And I wonder if other exceptions would follow, too. And I would, I would leave it open, those exceptions, you know, with the exception of the footprint of the downtown business alliance and, and potentially other areas in town that lobby for said exemption.
Did you have something you wanted to clarify or?
Just with regard to the comparison to the winter parking ordinance, it doesn't exempt that area completely from the ordinance. It gives different hours. So that could be done in this situation as well. So it's not saying that the noise ordinance does not apply in that district, but that maybe the hours are different. So that is also an option.
Gotcha. Okay, so yeah, just, just carving out different set of hours for the downtown business alliance. I think that might work on a trial basis. To clarify a couple of the other points, Mayor, I, I do think it's important for the police officer to have to be in the home in order to measure decibel levels. And I'm reversing your exact scenario that you brought up where you're in the Monte Vista and it's really loud and you go outside and you can't hear it. Well, the opposite could be true, too. If your home is fairly soundproofed, but there's loud music happening outside the boundaries of the home, I think it's reasonable for the police officer or the enforcement mechanism to be able to distinguish between the noise level where the, where the people are saying they're being disturbed and the noise level on the other side of that boundary. And, oh, there was one more. Finally, I, I, I'm sorry to say this, Councilmember McCarthy, but I, I feel like we've already nitpicked these definitions. And I remember a couple of weeks ago, having the position that these definitions should remain vague so that they can be interpreted by the enforcement mechanism. Any attempt to, to get more specific is going to be nailing Jell-O to the wall. It's going to be an exercise in wordsmithing and it's going to take us hours.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Okay, so I apologize. I should not have put the downtown business alliance maybe in this conversation. Tiffany, can you pull the map back up? Because this is what I was trying to get to. The downtown boundaries that, or Stacy, sorry. Thank you. This is what I was trying to get at and I'm, I apologize, I didn't realize that there was a map. So when I say the downtown business alliance, I'm kind of saying these streets. So take the DBA out of this and just look at the streets. This, to me, is where the, our city core is at. And I think it is a little bit different than the South Side. I'm going to politely disagree with Councilmember Matthews on that. And I, I do believe that the core of our city should have extended hours and that's all I'm, I'm asking. It's kind of like the parking ordinance, which we've gone over. And, you know, in a trial basis, maybe that's how we look at this, but I, I do think that we're tackling an issue that will affect the core of our city. And these are the streets where I'm, I was kind of trying to get at, that we would delineate from this conversation versus separate hours for this core. I hope that makes more sense. Thank you for pulling up the map.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very brief, I promise. I agree with that delineation of the downtown core. I am on board with the adjustment to the hours to nine and midnight. And I think maybe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, will make this brief. I think that the discussion about the downtown district be tabled for right now. We need to just decide on the noise ordinance for the city and then come back and reevaluate. I think it's too much for us to, to figure out tonight. I, I did want to point out that, I missed it when I spoke the last time, that pervasive is defined as present or felt throughout a place. So going back to Vice Mayor, they would need to go inside to determine if that noise disturbance is, is felt throughout. So anyway, that's all I have to say for right now. My phone is blowing up with business owners having a meltdown.
All right. Councilmember McCarthy, did you have another point?
Well, I want to address this idea of inside. I can assure you that the residents in this area are very disinclined to have policemen come into their house. That is completely unreasonable. The noise, and the other thing I'll point out is a lot of times people sleep with their windows open. My house does not have air conditioning. I sleep with the windows open in the summer. And a lot of people, especially in these older homes. So I feel very strongly that it has to be measured wherever the, the people are. Let me, let me get into this word pervasive since it was just brought up. The staff definition would say that if the noise could not be heard in someone's backyard, for instance, even if the sound in the living room or the bedroom, that it would not be pervasive. Pervasive means everywhere. So I'm suggesting that we should say pervasive means present or felt in any area of the property used by the occupant. So can we decide if council agrees with me on that or, and actually, the city attorney, I would be interested in your opinion of the word pervasive. I presume that would basically say if you can find one square inch where on the property that you cannot hear the noise, that it wouldn't be, it would not be pervasive.
So without getting into a whole lot of detail on that, we debated the word pervasive as opposed to other words, and I still believe it's the best word to use here.
The issue isn't what word we use. The issue is how we define that word.
No, what I'm saying is-
I have no problem with the word-
Yeah, the definition in here is one that I believe is, is appropriate.
Okay, so I presume the rest of the council agrees with the city attorney? So I'll yield on that. Let me get into sustained. The phrase extended period, what in the hell does that mean? So I'm suggesting that we do what they do in the Tucson ordinance, is define sustained as a certain number of minutes, maybe 10 minutes, I would suggest. So, I mean, Mr. Solomon, don't you agree that the, the term extended period is extremely vague?
It is subject to interpretation. I will say the way you're asking the question makes me think you're the lawyer here. Don't you agree?
Well, I'm not a lawyer.
But you play one on City Council?
But I do have-
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I know. I have some experience writing, my first job out of college is as a technical writer.
And, and again, sustained is, you know, continuing for an extended period, I know that is subject to interpretation. That said, I, I still believe it's the best definition for us in this case.
So I presume the council agrees with our city attorney? So I'll shut up about this one. I'd as well keep going here while I got the mic. I did want to get into this deal about measuring inside or outside. The wording, the way it is now, is not clear. So I would like to add, "The audibility shall be established either inside the building or outdoors on the affected property at the discretion of the individual who is disturbed by the noise." That's not really changing anything. It's just clarifying the intent that has been claimed for the existing words. I might read the existing words just for argument. It says, "For the purposes of enforcement of the provisions of this section, whether the noise is clearly audible shall be determined from the property of the individual who is reporting that they are disturbed by the noise." That's what the ordinance, the draft ordinance says right now.
I'll, I'll just point out that the train noise at the edge of the lawn at City Hall is a very different story than it is inside the building. I don't think that your parameters are defensible.
The idea of policemen coming into people's houses is completely unacceptable. One of the main reasons that I have been told by people that they don't file police reports is they don't want a policeman coming into their house in the middle of the night. It's intrusive.
All right, so I'm going to take a comment from Councilmember Sweet and then I've written down some of the things that I've heard you say and I want to make sure that I got it right and we can start to narrow down our views on a couple of points of the ordinance. Councilmember Sweet.
I just wanted to state that I am ready to have the discussion about the downtown being separate tonight. I don't think we need to punt that. And I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I'm going to start with time. And what I heard you say, Councilmember House, I heard you say nine PM, Sunday through Thursday, midnight, no, Sunday through Thursday and midnight Friday and Saturday. Councilmember Sweet, I heard you say 10 PM on the weekdays that I just stated at midnight on Saturday and Sunday.
I do hold to that, but I'm, I'm, I could go to nine. Definitely midnight.
You could go down to nine instead of 10. And Councilmember Harris, I have you down as 8 PM weekday and 10 PM weekend. Councilmember McCarthy, I have you also 8 PM and 10 PM.
Correct.
Councilmember Matthews, I had you down as either eight or nine on the weekday and midnight on the weekend. And Vice Mayor, I have you nine and midnight.
Nights, but if we're going to settle at nine, I am going to play nights.
I have to look back at my notes for what I said. I have nine and midnight. And I also made a note to myself that this does not mean that you can't play music inside the bar. It just means that the surrounding residents should not be unduly affected during those hours.
Mayor, I just want to clarify, too, that I'm, I'm okay with this because we're making a carve-out for the downtown footprint.
Okay. And then one of the others, things that we were sticking on is whether it needs to be measured inside or outside the residence. And the only notes that I have are Councilmember Sweet said outside, Councilmember McCarthy said outside, Vice Mayor said inside.
Mayor, I have a question for you.
Yes.
In what you just mentioned, are you, hello? Are you saying that this is just for the music and not people visiting outside? Because it was brought up one of our first meetings or so, that people, they turn off the music and it's just the people visiting outside in the, on the patio, I would assume mainly in the summertime, was also unacceptable to the residents.
Well, Councilmember McCarthy, you were the one who first raised this as to where it's measured from. So does that include voices?
It would include any noise coming from the bar.
And Councilmember Sweet and Vice Mayor, was that what you intended when you weighed in either way?
So I might have misunderstood. I thought we were talking about, instead of the officer going inside the house to listen to the noise, I would be okay if they were outside of the house.
And would that include, are you agreeing with Councilmember McCarthy that it doesn't matter whether it's music or just general noise?
I, I was assuming it was all noise, but maybe I need clarification on that.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Well, in terms of clarification, I don't know that we can parse those two things apart.
And you're still in the house?
Yes, the, the disturbance should be measured from inside the residence.
In, in police procedure, isn't it typically at the doorstep of the house that an officer is determining whether, I think it's usually noise coming out of that house, but where is an officer typically measuring it?
It really depends on the nature of the complaint. So if people were complaining about something happening in a residence, then they're going to go, you know, to that residence. I believe, you know, the issue here is that prior to our discussions about amending the ordinances and all of this, there was direction given by the former police chief to be able to determine if there was a violation of the criminal code, which was disorderly conduct, which is basically where somebody creates unreasonable noise, that to get the best evidence, the officer should enter the home to be able to hear inside the home the disturbance that was going on. And so that's where this issue has come from, is that was kind of the direction that was given to try and get the best evidence. With Councilmember McCarthy bringing this issue up, the language as it's drafted currently in the proposed ordinance was proposed based on that, that information. The best evidence would still be what are the people hearing that's disturbing them or causing the pervasive and sustained, you know, noise that's disturbing them. To get that information, it's a close, close as inside as possible. So if not inside, my suggestion would be at least at that doorstep.
Okay. I think we've, we've got doorstep. And one of the other questions was in terms of the fine and Councilmember House said that she likes option A and she likes number four being a thousand. One of the recommendations that was brought up was for a fourth time, a fourth offense to make the, the fee higher than a thousand, but I didn't have that written down for anyone So counsel, are you okay with option A, number four as is? Or do you think that we ought to entertain a higher fine? Go ahead.
I would support a higher fine, but this isn't a critical issue for me.
I, I support option B, which is the lower fine. And again, this is all contingent upon the exemption of the downtown footprint.
Councilmember Matthews is option B.
I'll go with the higher fine.
A, A. You're going with B? I'm going to say A. All right. I- I think that those were the main points that we needed to... Would you, please?
I'd just like to clarify on the doorstep issue. I wasn't sure who, how many we had for that.
We have six doorstep.
So I suggest that the word doorstep be added in there, so it's clearer, because the wording now is not completely clear. See, I am a lawyer, right?
Does that cover everything that you needed from us?
The only, I think, thing I think that is kind of left is the carving out for the downtown.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. After tonight, because this is just a work session, so we're just giving you direction. As my phone is about to blow up and be caught on fire, there still will be opportunity for public comment before anything's passed, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Because many, many businesses downtown and on the South Side had no idea that this discussion's been going on.
Go ahead.
I think that it's important for us to distinguish in conversations, we're not talking about the shoe store downtown. So when we say all businesses are blowing up our phones, what businesses are they that's blowing up the phone? We're not talking about the t-shirt shop. We're not talking about Macy's coffee shop. You know, I mean, so I think that words matter. And when we say stuff like, "Our phones are being blown up by all these businesses..."
I only meant restaurants.
Okay. All right. Okay. Then make that clear, who we're talking about.
It's not clear to me if we're talking about a carve-out for different hours downtown or that they would be exempt. And I'm open-minded about the option. I just want to know where council is.
We were talking about different hours or...
I was proposing different hours.
For all of downtown?
The block?
Yep. The math that was brought up.
May I just clarify that? So we're talking about basically Route 66 to Cherry, Humphreys to W.C. Riles?
Correct.
However, you said that your position was based upon this not applying to the rest of the city. Was that what you said? Only applying to downtown.
What? You're doing a great job, Mayor. No, seriously. I think that that downtown footprint, which was justified, should be exempt from this noise ordinance.
The north side of the tracks should be exempt.
Yeah, let's call it that.
Can someone pull up the map again?
And to be specific, I mean, exempt from the hours... I don't have it open right now, but the hours listed in the noise ordinance should be exempt within that footprint. I think that's consistent with what Councilmembers Sweet is saying.
It is, to a point. Either exempt, or we say instead of 9:00 and midnight, it's, you know, midnight seven days a week, or something that is extended.
There are several ways that we can write in that exception. Yeah. It's pretty simple. I think we just want to make sure, I heard Route 66 north, I heard tracks north, and that's Phoenix north on the screen. So I think that would be helpful to clarify.
Sterling, did you say Route 66, Humphreys?
So what I had said-
Thank you.
-was Route 66 north to Cherry Avenue, that area in between that, and then east to west, Humphreys to W.C. Riles. That's the downtown area.
Correct.
So that is all north of the tracks. And that does not have these hours, 9:00 and midnight?
Correct.
Nor does the rest of town?
No.
Have I confused myself now?
So I believe what is being proposed is that the ordinance applies to the entire city, 9:00 and midnight, except for the downtown, which would either not have any restrictions or different time restrictions.
Yes. Okay. My apologies for that. So you need our direction as to whether everyone agrees with that, or a majority agrees with that?
Correct.
Is there anyone who does not agree?
Well, I will just say in general, I'm not happy about this timeline, creating time limits for noise at all. And I would actually like to introduce, when it's time to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that doesn't include that, and we'll see what happens to it. And then we can get more restrictive as we go.
So by way of clarification, tonight's just a work session, so there won't be any action taken tonight. It's just the recommendations or direction that we're taking back and then bringing back to you again later.
But would you clarify for me what you mean by timeline?
The 9:00 PM on the weekdays and midnight on the weekends.
You do-
I'm acknowledging that that's probably going to be what gets through, but I do want to be on record of saying that I think it's too restrictive.
Okay. Gotcha. And then Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I don't disagree with the carve-out for the downtown district. I'm just wanting to clarify that I would be wanting to see those different options brought back on what that might look like.
All right. So we have 9:00 and midnight and fourth violation, staying at $1,000. And at the doorstep or right outside the residence home.
Yes.
And the carve-out for north downtown.
Correct, and we can bring some options back-
Okay.
-for that at a first street.
Is there anything that we have not covered?
I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you for your patience, everyone. I know this is, and I said this at our first meeting, this is one of the more difficult issues that we've dealt with because there isn't an elegant answer to this that we can all leave satisfied. All right. So moving on to item number 11, open call to the public, and we do not have any informational items, two from mayor, council, city manager, future agenda item requests. Councilmember House?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Can you come back to me? I have another fair, but I got to get organized here.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Councilmember Harris?
Nothing.
Councilmember Matthews?
Nothing tonight.
All right. I have just a couple of things. We, the Arizona Department of Veterans Services, held a ribbon-cutting for the new veterans' home yesterday, and it was really well-attended. There are 80 beds and already five veterans living there, including one person that I knew. So that was great. On Saturday, Lowell Observatory is having the grand opening of their astronomy discovery center. There's music starting at 10:00, ribbon-cutting at 10:30, and then open to the doors to the astronomy discovery center will be open at 11:00, and you can get tickets through Lowell's website. And that is all I have, and I'll come back to you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I got a letter from, and I presume other council members did, Jean Myers. And she pointed out that the city was looking into a city ordinance regarding conserving prairie dog colonies. And so I would like, I told her that I would ask for a fair on this, that we come back and look at that again. I think it just sort of fell in a hole and never got resolved as a yes or a no. And then city manager, I can give you this information.
Can I respond, Mayor? Yeah, I have the information, and thank you. And this item is slated for a fair discussion. It hasn't come back on the agenda yet to see if there's enough votes to advance it, but it is in the queue.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
City manager, anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, then we are adjourned.